What? I can't do that.
We're missing, it's supposed to be six.
Oh, okay.
No, he's not coming.
Oh, not.
One, two, three, four, five, ten for me six.
Sam, fifteenth is the only conservative area of Princeton. You know, this tonight, yeah. Hopefully not, but yeah. How do we have five?
So they up on it often to be twenty one years. Tell us what's the future. On Saturday, sixteen. Now the bad.
It's probably missed mid.
Yeah, well, Friday.
They said ten.
Yeah.
I haven't met yet.
No, right, because he just came under your name.
Yeah.
I'll there's.
Okay, where's Jerry?
Jerry's not here.
I need Jerry because he needs to say whether it's good.
There's Sam notes.
Sam, Jerry's here, Sam, Jerry here.
I talked to him today, yeah, if you want to start and do the minutes, we can.
He has to, oh, we can get up to the application, right?
He, he, Jerry's supposed to be here, if you notice.
Because he, he has to give his like, okay for.
He usually does it ahead of time, let me see if he sent an email and say everything is okay, so then I'll make the statement.
Okay. For the minutes? Yeah, um, okay. Okay. This is to advise notice, time, date, location, extent known, agenda of the select subject meeting was prominently posted in a public place reserved for such or similar announcements on January twenty sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and transmitted to the Times, the Princeton Packet, and West Windsor and Plainsboro News on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, and filed with the Township Clerk on January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Cindy, please call the roll.
It's outside.
Okay.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Laverro. Mr. Shiktau. Mr. Panko. Mr. Bag.
Yes.
Ms. Bari. Ms. Applegate. Councilwoman Jivers.
Here.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Chairman Clark.
Here, thank you. Okay, um. First item on the agenda is minutes for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have any amendments, changes, clarifications, any to be made to those minutes?
No, just for, um, Madam Secretary, I was not on the board in December, so I just recuse myself from voting.
Okay. Um. Cindy, please call the roll for the people that are eligible to vote for December fourteenth minutes.
Mr. Bag.
Yes.
Mayor Morata.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Huberman.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion carries for the minutes. Mike. Yes. You never moved and seconded the meeting, you just called the roll.
The minutes, we didn't have a motion for the roll.
Okay, I move.
I second.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And the roll will count for the motion and second. Okay, um. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on non-agenda items? Non, uh, non-pending applications, please step up to the mic and state your name and address. No pub, no public comments. Okay. It's just in time for your part, Jerry. Yes, we're moving right along.
This chair proof of publication service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Great. First application is PB twenty-two dash oh four Caden LLC minus site plan and bulk variance. Block twenty-five, lot twenty-five point oh one, sixteen seventy-six Old Trenton Road. Property is zoned R dash one slash C district, M, M L U L two one twenty-three. Um. Applicant Caden LLC seeks minor site plan and bulk variance approvals to construct an approximate, approximately two hundred and thirteen square foot addition to the existing Edinburgh Animal Hospital building on the property. The building is a three point five one acre parcel located sixteen seventy-six Old Trenton Road, designated as block twenty-five, lot twenty-five point oh one on the West Windsor tax maps and located in the R dash one slash C zoning district. As part of this application, applicant also seeks to demolish and remove certain walkways, ramps, steps, retaining walls, and other improvements, and to install new walkways, ramps, steps, retaining walls, ADA parking space, and site improvements on the property. Um, is the applicant represented?
Yes, thank you, uh, as the chairman, for the record, Peter Flannery with the law firm of Bisger Hoff, on behalf of the applicant Caden LLC. As the chairman had noted, this application is for Caden LLC, uh, it's a minor site plan application with bulk variance. This is for what's known as the Edinburgh Animal Hospital at sixteen seventy-six Old Trenton Road. Uh, it's in the R one zone, though because of the vet clinic use, uh, some of the requirements of the RRC zone apply, and we'll get into that in terms of testimony. Um, there's an existing use on the property, it's been in existence for close to forty years now, it's a two-story vet clinic as well as a residence on a three point five one acre parcel. Um, in May two thousand, um, township zoning regulations were amended to permit vet clinics operating as of, um, January one, two thousand. This clinic had previously obtained a use variance approval from zoning board. Um, in two thousand and two, uh, the applicant's predecessor came before this board for, uh, site plan as well as bulk variance relief, um, to convert about three hundred and twenty-eight square feet of the residence into the vet clinic area. As part of that application approval, um, the board granted two variances, uh, for, uh, the site. One was for a, uh, the setback from residential zone, residential area. Um, it's typically one hundred and fifty feet, uh, the applicant obtained a variance for eighty feet from the easterly lot line. The other variance was for a fifty-foot wide landscape buffer. Um, the applicant obtained a variance from this board for, at least for part of the property, for fifteen foot or so landscape buffer, um, near a portion of residential lot next door, which was, uh, undeveloped. In two thousand and twelve, uh, again, the applicant's predecessor came before this board and obtained, uh, additional, uh, site plan approval for a two hundred and forty square foot addition, uh, for waiting room for the vet clinic. Um, this did not affect any of the existing, uh, variances. Um, tonight, the applicant is back for the board seeking minor site plan approval as well as bulk variance approval and waivers for a two hundred and thirteen square foot addition to the vet clinic. This is not for any, uh, uh, space to be used for, uh, animals, it's for office space, um, uh, for Dr. Danielson. Um, we're also seeking, uh, a slight intensification of the existing non-conformity with the, uh, setback from the easterly lot line. Uh, eighty was approved and eighty-seven feet is existing, applicant is proposing about seventy-eight feet, uh, in terms of setback from that easterly lot line. Um, applicant is also seeking, uh, waivers for parking. Um, there were thirteen parking spaces approved as part of a prior site plan application. Um, that was for a, a parking area that was not paved in any way. Um, the applicant, uh, when applicant bought the property a few years ago, uh, that parking area was not striped, the applicant went ahead and striped it as seventeen, which seemed to be the number of spaces that, um, could be created within it, within that existing parking area. And so the applicant is here tonight to request that, uh, parking waiver relief for seventeen parking spaces. And we'll have additional testimony from the applicant's witnesses regarding, um, that issue. There were some submission waivers requested, uh, two of those are withdrawn in terms of the, uh, survey plan waivers. Um, per, uh, Mr. Guzic's report, the applicant will, as a condition of any approval, um, revise the survey plan to show, uh, the, uh, existing parking spaces as well as, um, the flood hazard area, um, which does not affect, uh, any of the improvements, uh, either existing or proposed. Um, applicant, of course, is still, uh, requesting submission waivers for, uh, requiring distances measured along the right-of-way line and, uh, location of all existing utilities, of course, however, the applicant would agree to, uh, obtain the New Jersey one call, uh, mark out for, um, utility lines. Um, I have two witnesses here tonight, my primary witness will be Mr. David Barger, who is the applicant's architect, and he'll be going over the proposed improvements and, uh, the general application. I also have Mr. Matthew Walsh, our engineer, who will testify regarding, um, some of the, the grading and additional engineering issues. Um, so, uh, if I could, I'd like to have, uh, Mr. David Barger sworn in, um, he's our, uh, architect.
Can we swear both witnesses in together?
That's fine, uh, Mr. Walsh, if you could, um, oh, here he is.
If you could both raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that testimony about to give would be the truth?
Yes.
So it's one or a firm, could you state your full name and spell your last name?
Sure, Matthew Walsh, Stoughton Caldwell Engineers, professional engineer. David Barger, architect, B A R G E R.
Thank you. I might as well qualify both witnesses too, while they're up here. Uh, Mr. Barger, if you could just briefly describe your, uh, vice chair education experience with the board.
Sure, good evening, everyone. Uh, uh, for the record, David Barger, architect, uh, president of David Barger Architects Incorporated, uh, for about twenty-six years now, since nineteen ninety-six. Practicing licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and, um, in Pennsylvania, um, in New Jersey since nineteen eighty-seven for about thirty-five plus years. Also licensed in Virginia with inactive licenses in Delaware, Maryland, and Texas. I'm a member of the American Institute of Architects, I'm certified by National Council of Architectural Registration Boards, a member in good standing of Central New Jersey Chapter, the I A. For educational, I first a professional degree in architecture, uh, nineteen eighty-four Carnegie Mellon University, um, and since then, I've completed small business development curriculum at Wharton School and University of Pennsylvania. Continued CEU attainment over the years to maintain licenses and, um, accreditation.
Please be close to microphone.
Yeah. Um, and I'm a former chairman and member of West Hampton Township Historic Preservation Commission for about ten years, um, that's in Burlington County. Also a former member and chairman of the West Hampton Township Land Development Board, uh, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. I testified in front of numerous, uh, uh, land development board planning and zoning boards in New Jersey and Pennsylvania over the past twenties plus years. And I think I've appeared before this board in the past several times.
Well, yeah, I know you've been before the known.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask the, um, county attorney a question, a conflict of interest to me, I just wanted.
Sure, go ahead.
We, uh, only need, my family had guinea pigs, and many, many years ago, we went there for a procedure or two. Is that a problem?
No, not at all.
Did the guinea pigs live?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, then, then, then you're good to, then you're good to go. Is your license current in New Jersey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any issues with this, uh, witness? Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, Matthew Walsh, professional engineer, state of New Jersey, I have a bachelor of science from the College of New Jersey, I graduated in two thousand and thirteen. Been working for Stoughton Caldwell ever since, under the tutelage of Bob Stout, who was our owner, I'm sure he's appeared before this board several times. My license is current and it's about it.
Okay, any issues with this, uh, witness? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Barger, um, perhaps you want to introduce some of the exhibits you have?
Yeah. If you could just, uh, for maybe one minute, I'll set up the easel and that'll allow me to. Some blocks to take like here? I have three exhibits to introduce this evening, um, they are three color rendered, um, exhibit boards. I have reduced size copies for the board as well, if that would help.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll pass those out. On those exhibits, you'll see, um, uh, a first sheet, which is a photograph of the existing conditions, um, it's a representative photograph of the side of the existing animal hospital that we're going to be talking about tonight and that, um, we're going to be adding to and modifying a bit.
And what more that is exhibit A one.
A one, okay. The second sheet is a, um, revised, um, uh, I'm sorry, it's a rendering of the same view, uh, backed out a little bit from a camera angle, but the same exact view showing the new improvements, it's an artist rendition of that, uh, it's sheet V one.
Of exhibit A two.
And finally, um, there is a, uh, color rendered floor plan of the work area that we're talking about this evening, showing the front of the building, the animal hospital building, as well as the related site, um, um, improvement areas around the building. Uh, that's sheet F P one.
That would be A three.
That'll be A, A two and A three respectively, if that's acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, first, uh, pleasure to be here tonight to present this, uh, application, I'll be, um, happy to answer any questions you have in regards to the architectural design portions of the, uh, of this application. Uh, as, uh, as Mr. Flannery mentioned, this describes, this application describes proposed improvements in subject property and animal hospital facilities to expand and alter the existing animal hospital portion of the facility and to provide improved administrative office space and to enable the alteration of a portion of the existing office area inside to create a new, uh, animal exam room. So I have a few, these few exhibits will, uh, I'll, I'll refer to them as I go through my testimony this evening. Um, they're artist renditions, as I described, um, in the explanation of the exhibits. Uh, the proposed two hundred and thirteen square foot office area. Will be located on, on the, on the, basically the front side of the building, so if you refer to vertical exhibit A three or sheet F P one, it's floor plan of the building, essentially in the dark blue area represents where the new addition is. The light blue area represents the existing construction, a portion of the facility, it's not the entire, but it's a portion of it. And on this east side, we're going to be proposing the new addition of two hundred and thirteen square feet. Uh, you'll also see, uh, some other features, um, related to this, to the site, um, improvements that go along with this project. But the proposed, um, two hundred and thirteen square foot office addition, uh, is going to occur at a place where there's an existing, uh, handicap access ramp. Um, this is commonly known as ADA, we're in our ADA improvement, so if it's, if there's no objection, I'll just refer to it that way for just for remedy's sake. Um, so to replace the access ramp that is removed because of the construction of the new, new addition, uh, the applicant's proposing a new ADA ramp, a different portion of the, of the front of the building, on the right-hand side or the northern side, um, adjacent to where the existing rating. So this new ramp will connect sidewalks, existing sidewalks, to the existing entry terrace where the main entry store is for the reason of their facility, just like the old one did, is just in a new location. So in addition to that ramp, um, the applicant is proposing some improvements in the parking area as well. You'll see on the, uh, on the eastern side of the, uh, of the parking area here, northeast side, there's, uh, an area called improved ADA parking. That is, is, is an area where the existing ADA parking spot exists. But the new, um, the improved one is basically going to improve the paving quality, improve the retaining wall that was kind of hit by the car not too long ago fractured, and also flatten its slope a little bit, so that it really confirms well and optimizes that part of the, that part of the parking area for ADA's parking. So when we do that work, um, it requires a new ADA ramp to be installed at the parking lot. So we're, we're showing that adjacent to the, uh, improved ADA parking space, and that allows for the, um, you know, convenient access from the parking space as well as from, from the rest of the parking lot, as well as from the improved parking area. So in addition to the new, um, office area, uh, expansion, there's going to be a new set of steps, uh, that, that exit, that's just for the office personnel. That replaces an existing stupid steps that we had removed, starting in addition. Uh, and that connects into an existing bricklayer walkway, um, part of which will be repositioned or relocated to accommodate. Okay, so that's essentially, uh, the, um, the floor plan, um, uh, description for the improvements for the building. Now, if you refer to exhibit A two or, uh, sheet, uh, V one, you'll see what we're, what we're proposing in three D graphic format here, um, this is an artist rendition of a, a rendering showing the new ADA parking spot on the right foreground, the retaining wall, um, reconstruction around it, the aisle way for the ADA space highlighted in yellow strapping, the new handicap ramp, uh, or ADA ramp that runs, uh, from the parking area up to the first level, uh, sidewalk. And then you'll see in, in the background that the addition to the building, um, is corresponding, uh, in appearance to how the exhibit we're going to appear from the extent of the roof, we have the wall, contain the character and nature of the building, so that the new addition harmonizes aesthetically, um, with the existing building. Um, and if you compare exhibit A one to exhibit A two, you can kind of see where those differences lie, since the vantage points stay in the same, um, same location.
David, what's the grade change between the parking lot and at the end of the parking lot ramp?
At this point out in the, in the front of the.
Yeah.
Um, there's no great change there.
What?
There's no great change, what we're going to do is, is flatten the front end of that parking space, pushing it down a little bit. Uh, we'll still have a drainage slip out of that, that area, but we're going to flatten that space, and that's what, what creates the ramp requirement. On this side of the ramp.
Still need thirteen feet of ramp to accomplish that? That seems a bit extreme to me.
There's about a foot.
A foot, oh, okay.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why that is what it is.
Is there any other lighting, because the one post light is in the distance, is that going to be enough for that area?
Yeah, the existing, uh, post light is, it may be being a foreground a little before than what that photograph shows, you can kind of see if you look at exhibit A one. Yeah, it's a little bit, that, that's not going to be changed, and so that illuminates this area now, and so we're planning on it.
So it's okay with the performance with the code for handicap?
I believe so, I'll let the, I'll let our engineers testify further on it, but I believe the lighting performance isn't changing. Mr. Walsh will address and his testimony. Okay, so, um, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Flannery talked about the zoning and the setbacks, so I won't go into too much of that, uh, let me describe this building a little bit for, um, for an architectural standpoint, uh, this is, as I mentioned, a one-story wood frame structure, roofline intended to match the existing buildings, cable and roof, uh, slopes. If it takes an extension of that, maybe it comes out towards you, like that side, that should represent exhibit A one, or sheet A two. Walls align, the roof plans align, floor level lines, um, the color scheme is the master of this building, it would be white siding, white windows, and trim. Um, regularly mentioned, the kind of the roofing, matching the existing. And, um, that's all meant to, to harmonize and match, um, uh, the existing construction. This additionally constructed to meet or exceed current A thermal, um, insulation requirements and general energy conservation compliance requirements as per a comp check report, for those of you familiar with that, uh, related for, for construction permits. Um, uh, that requires us to conform with code, and we'll try to call that comp check report out submitted. But, uh, it'll include features such as high efficiency HVAC, energy lighting, and so forth. Uh, we'll have appropriate code compliant ventilation for the office area additions. To be provided via extension of and or upgrades to, uh, existing HVAC equipment that already exists. And if we need something, and if, once we get into the designer, it requires additional supplemental HVAC, uh, support, we'll probably use some sort of a double system, that minimizes the, uh, equipment, uh, protocol on site. And what, and what's, what will be required to achieve compliance, so the ventilation levels for the animal area is within the facility will not change as a result of the work, uh, of the project that's related to this application.
Are the utility, um, boxes in, in being covered by the light screen?
Yes, yeah, um, that's a detail that we wanted to, um, incorporate in the improvements here, basically to, um, allow for a more aesthetic and result, and also, you know, since now the ramp and upper landing passes by that electrical gear, even though it's safe, and you know, it's standard electrical gear and service products, um, we want to propose that they look, look more attractive, and also, you know, eliminating potential risk for air, air.
This, this area that they're pointing, this one.
Yeah.
Is this thing, right?
That's existed.
What doesn't match with your plan, where does the area from the sun?
Yeah, the existing area is, um,
Wait.
Right here, this is the building.
On the left side now, which we are extending now, so where does it show the plant, this area?
Yeah, it's, it's right here. It's that light blue area.
But in the, in this one, in the light blue, they're lined up. They're lined up here, and in the, I just do, they're not like, they're, they're projecting out.
Yeah, maybe a little bit subtle color change, but if you look carefully, you'll see that there's no, the white wall line and the gray of the existing entrance parents difference from the blue of the existing structure. So this, if, uh, maybe to draw, and I'll draw a red line with this, like this, with this, and that is the L that you're showing for the, for the interior. Okay, so, um, that's, um, essentially my presentation, I, you know, the proposed additions and alterations, um, you know, will improve the animal hospital, and a well-established professional services provider, many years in the top, but you know, they're not only better company, it's new, which is also a definitely better area, and they're also a way to provide a better community and more effective and efficient manner. So I'll be happy to answer the questions you have related to this. That's important, yes.
I'm just, on the, I'm not familiar in your plants, which you have somewhere to us, anybody, you which area demolishing and which, I know a new area constructed, but it's not, yeah, which area needed demolition plant, you know exactly where it is.
I mean, the site plans show a demolition, demolition aspect, but essentially all that's coming out, uh, is the handicap ramp area, the idiogram of the building.
Do you have demolition plant, right?
I believe that.
Yes, that's, right, the survey plan is, acts as a demo plan, and we'll have Mr. Walsh speak on that.
The other wise, uh, the only other demolition that's occurring, removals that is occurring are, are bits and pieces of the pavement, and the sidewalk, and the relationship, where this area is being improved, and bits and pieces of the first ever walkway, or that area. And the only real demolition of a structure is the existing ramp.
Okay. He, like, question, go ahead, Linda.
No, I think there were some questions that came up about parking, what was, what was permitted, and there were some extra spots, and then there was, um, some gravel area that was being used to, uh, so I just wanted, and maybe you can address parking, what's in compliance with, with with what was approved by former board ten years ago?
We can have, uh, councilman, uh, we can have Mr. Walsh speak on, on that, on the parking area.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Uh, um, Anna, she has another question? Okay, I have a question, uh, is there anything in our, um, planning board consultants, uh, reports that, uh, need to be addressed or you don't agree with, or, uh, for your part, I should say, as opposed?
Architecturally, I think I referenced everything that was mentioned in, in the planner's report, uh, I, we don't have any issues with compliance there, uh, I just want to. I just want to confirm that we are located in the R one C zone.
Yeah. Okay. Fine.
Mr. Barjo, I just have a few follow-up questions for you. Um further to to the chairman's comment. Uh in the planner's report, uh there were a few comments regarding signage and and landscaping. I believe the only signage we're proposing is uh the ADA uh signage, correct?
That is correct. Uh it shows on this exhibit uh B one, exhibit A two, you'll see the handicap signage here. There is some there now existing, as you can see, but this will be updated with the current part. So a lot of big changes on it.
It it won't be nailed to the tree?
Will not be nailed to the tree.
Not notification went out to everyone within, was it two hundred feet?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barjo. Um Peter, who's going to um address the question that Dan raised about the landscaping buffer, whether it uh?
Uh Mr. Walsh will. Thank you.
You want to mark this as B one or A four?
A four. We'll mark this as A four, the aerial.
So this is exhibit A four, which is a color aerial of our site, which is outlined in red. The building where the existing facility is located is about in the middle of the facility or the middle of the site here, which is a couple hundred feet off of off of the main road. So we'll we'll flip through the
Before you leave that that plan, Mr. Walsh, you just briefly describe the surrounding area and some of the uh the landscaping on the property and how it relates.
So to the west, you have the entrance to Mercer County Park, and then to the east, you have some existing residential, and then behind us is all open space. And then our our lot is pretty heavily landscaped or wooded, if you will. Um there's an existing landscape buffer behind the the existing parking lot, which we are maintaining. We're not touching that. We're not you know, expanding the the outer extents of what has already been improved on the site.
So the parking lots remain exactly as it was previously approved, and we have been maintaining the landscaping buffer. And I believe there have also been um you know uh shrubs and other landscaping added
Correct. The applicant has has added to that to make it nicer for for her patrons and for the the rest of the neighborhood and the neighbors.
And although there is a smaller uh buffer in the parking lot area, as you move toward the street, there's a full fifty-foot wide buffer, correct?
Correct.
As as you the pass by the actual uh single-family dwelling on the base lot.
So there's that hundred and fifty-foot buffer to the adjacent residential zone or residential use. The existing building is two hundred and ninety-three feet to the closest existing adjacent residential structure. With the proposed addition, that's going to go to two hundred and eighty-four feet, which is significantly more than that hundred and fifty-foot requirement.
And that smaller buffer is immediately adjacent to the the backyard of the residential property.
Yeah, so your closest residential structure is is closer to the street. So maybe thirty or forty feet off the road. We're a couple hundred feet behind that.
Thank you.
Mark this A five?
Yes, mark the A five. You just briefly described the exhibit.
So this is a color rendering of what's being proposed. So you have the the existing building and the existing garage in the lighter shade of tan, I guess. And then the darker shade of tan is the the existing or the proposed building footprint that's being added, which is going to be the office. So out, out more I can. So this is the driveway going down to the old trend group. So the the plan that you have in front of you, which was originally submitted, has thirteen parking spaces. About a year and a half ago, the applicant decided to upgrade the site and repave the parking lot, and it was restripped, which was restripped to give us seventeen parking spaces. The original approval was for thirteen. And we're required nine. So we have additional spaces than you know, what's required.
And just to be clear, the when there the restriping occurred, it had not been previously striped, correct?
Correct.
It was just a paved parking lot.
Open lot.
And the seventeen spaces represented essentially, you know, how many cars could fit in that lot.
Right. So your your ordinance requires nine foot by eighteen foot spaces. When the lot was restripped, we're a little bit below that. I think our small spaces just shy of nine feet, about eight eight point five, eight point six, and the depth is just shy of seventeen at sixteen point nine. So we'd like to request relief to to allow the extra spaces, but they're a little bit smaller than.
That's in the um site plan section of the ordinance. That would be waiver relief, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And and just to be clear, the ADA space is in compliance.
Correct. So the ADA space will be van accessible, so it's eleven foot.
All all four that they have from thirty seventeen, all are some 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 standard size?
Correct. So in the middle here, you have a pretty big area where vehicles can maneuver. The the for the drive aisle, your your narrowest spot is nineteen feet. Usually you're twenty-four feet for a two-way, so it's just a shade under. And this is the area where the buffer is to to the adjacent residential. So we're trying not to expand upon that and keep that so to not affect the the adjacent residents.
And a lot of these spaces are for employees as well, correct?
Correct. So it fits for what they're trying to do.
The garage.
Um yeah, there's also some additional space.
How does the garage work? I mean, automotive automotive access to the garage from which?
There's a garage door here. That's that's really it.
Is it a single? Is it a a single?
I believe so.
Size garage? Or the double?
Okay.
There's three doors on the short side?
On the back.
On the back.
And there's also a one on the side.
So on that that gravel area on the two sides of the garage, is that existing to remain?
Yes, we're not touching that.
And does that gravel area in any way uh serve as uh patron overflow parking or anything like that?
I don't believe so. We can make that for employees if we need to.
Which part is for employees?
The gravel area behind the garage here. And the front area would be for
Well, are are you using any of that part of the gravel area now? I thought there was mention about use of the gravel area now.
They do use it.
So is that is that permitted? Like, do you have to get special permission as part of this application to do that?
I don't know that the gravel area is used regularly for parking. I mean, I think some of the aerial photographs may have shown a
Well, how long? Half the year, every other day. I don't know. I what's?
Right.
What's like the code or or do we have to give permission for that or or not? I think that's just on just that's not a technical question.
It's not going to be striped or?
No, but it's still it's still being used.
We could put a signage up that, you know, sign here that says it's for employees only. Exactly. That could be.
And I think a lot of that would probably be needed for
Kind of advise us on on that. I'd just like to know.
Well, if it's
Let me ask you a question. So that's the furthest away from the entrance, correct? That gravel, nobody would elect to park there. Unless it was like every others, the seventeen spots were taken, and then you say, okay, I got to park somewhere. And they would pull their car onto the gravel lot and walk their dog to the front entrance.
That's correct.
That's just my that's my my view.
Yeah, I just want to know if there's a special code having to deal with gravel lots. I'm out of like really depth. I just want to get everything squared away on on all.
All the township professionals could raise their right hand? You swear or firm a testimony about to give the truth? If you just go around, say, state your name.
Ozzy Musu or an associate shopping consultant?
Dan Goberlowski, landscape architect for the township.
But now looking through the regulations that the plan and the and reported, um we do have section two hundred dash twenty-nine A, the speech of access. This is under general regulation regarding area design standards. It says, under the act of the two hundred and thirty, shall provide, each access drives for driveways shall be provided in accordance with our period by that that can one of the sections. So you know, you pay the actors drive driveways. I'm not so looking for the information regarding a parking lot, um.
It's not a parking lot.
Is there is there is there any residential affective? Is it going to be that business house?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, um this is right. I mean, that's essentially what would be used for uh the primary use would be residential and there'd be access to that garage.
Well, it is, but they're using it for a business too. That's what I'm saying.
Right, but the intention is for the striped parking spaces to be used for patron, you know, patrons.
Well, they will be.
Right.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm only bringing this up because it's mentioned in these reports about parking.
It's not. It's not anticipated that there will be overflow parking in the back. The seventeen spaces will be sufficient.
So do we have to give permission?
Well, well
or not?
Hold on, hold on a second. There's nine spaces required. There's seventeen there. There were there. Yeah, so that's not a problem for parking, I would imagine, right? If the gravel wasn't there, the cars would be parking on the grass for overflow. We've approved other other applications where we've asked the people, hey, where's, I think it was on Cranberry Road over there, right? If I remember correctly. Then we we said, where's the overflow parking? Oh, we're going to use, you know, the parks, uh whatever that park is, Van Ness Park, no. Right? So can we then designate the residential gravel road as overflow parking in emergency cases when some dog is having a lot of friends over for a birthday party or something? I I I I don't know. We're belaboring this point, but it's just the residential gravel parking lot.
Well, Mr. Walsh and and Mr. Flanagan have indicated that they would be certainly willing to put up a sign saying that gravel area in addition to its residential use, should only be used for employee parking. And I think that resolves it. And I think that would be part of the site plan that would be approved.
And that wouldn't interfere with the residents pulling in and out of their garage? It's big enough space for that?
It's a pretty pretty big area.
Okay, and I don't know how many employees are going to park there, but that that should resolve the problem, might be.
We do have a specific section that's in two hundred and twenty-nine. Uh so landing a brain quite defined, but it does say that all the parking areas and access there too shall be properly ranked and all such areas shall be a deep surface and except for parking spaces, accessories. So if that parking area is used for residential purposes, it could be gravel.
But if it's going to be employee parking, I'm not advocating it, but if if that might be the case, they would simply need a waiver from from that section. Yeah.
Correct.
I mean, would they ever pave it or for the employees?
At this time, I don't think so, because then you get into stormwater design.
Right, it's pervious right now, so we'd want to keep it that way. Okay, that solves the problem. Hang a sign.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, everybody okay with that? Sounds good. Thank you.
There was a question about the lighting. The there's existing lighting. It's sufficient. We're not making any adjustments or changes to that. Um and the last thing is we're asking for a variance for the side yard setback. The setback um right now is eighty-seven, a little more than eighty-seven feet from the existing building to the the side property line here. With the addition, that's going to go to a little more than seventy-eight feet. So about nine of nine foot uh closer to that that side property line. As I said, we're not changing the buffers. We're keeping, it's kind of within the the extents of what's already approved and existing for the site.
And just to clarify, um that setback is it's not necessarily a side yard setback. It's a special setback from a residential zone or use for the the vet clinic. Right, thank you.
Was that uh in your previous appearances before boards in two thousand two and two thousand twelve? Was that a setback and approved condition of in in those applications?
Yes, uh Mr. Hober, it was. In two thousand two, there was a variance granted for an eighty foot setback.
Okay, and now it's what?
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight point three five.
To me, that's almost de minimis um as as a change. So I I don't I don't have any problems with that type of approval.
And we're still over two hundred feet, almost three hundred feet, two hundred and eighty-four feet to from the addition to the closest existing residential house. And there was one more thing from your
If I could ask David Novak. Um and this would be for the applicant's witness as well. If the um distance to the residential uh boundary line is being decreased, why is a variance necessary for that?
It's being the uh the setback is being decreasing the percent that the well getting closer to the setback line. So they're they're increasing the level of non-conformity, so that will be the variance that we want. So if they were going from eighty-seven feet to maybe a hundred feet that's there, they're going from eighty-seven feet to seventy-eight feet, so getting closer to that residential setback where it's supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet away. And that's what's triggering.
Oh, I see. Okay, yeah.
But as the engineer and then goes well, they're closer to Old Red Road.
Right.
Before they go to the uh aerial on A seven of my memo, uh which is due sale if you want to measure it out, money should be fifty. Those wells are closer to Old Red Road.
We can go back there. We want to take a look back to A four. The, you know. The addition is going to be about here. And the closest house is two hundred and eighty-four feet away. And your engineer did bring up the question of flood hazard area. Uh I did check that this morning. I discussed that with him. Uh we are outside of all flood hazard areas. Um we're also well above the the base flood elevation of sixty-nine. Our finished floor is going to be about eighty-one, so we're about twelve feet above that.
For the parking area.
Yeah, the parking area would also be
What elevation parking area is?
About seventy-four, seventy-five.
Just two more uh questions. Uh one, just to clarify for the record, uh the existing setback is about eighty-seven feet, but the two thousand two approval actually granted a variance for eighty feet from that eastern property line. So effectively, in reality, we are increasing from eighty-seven, the the non-conformity from eighty-seven to seventy-eight, but based on the prior variance approval, it's only from eighty to seventy-eight. Uh and also just uh another question on uh regarding landscaping. Could you just briefly talk about landscaping that's changing around the building?
So we're not, obviously, we're not touching anything in the buffer, but we are going to add some some low shrubs um around the the existing, or excuse me, the proposed addition. So some low, you know, foundation plantings, and we can work with your township professionals to come up with something that's acceptable.
Okay. Any questions from?
I'm sorry, where where would those plantings be?
The foundation plantings around the proposed addition.
Okay, um any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other witnesses?
Those are all the witnesses I have. Um certainly open it up to the public. Public has any questions.
We're not ready for the public yet. We're going to hear from our professionals and then the public.
Thank you.
Okay, David, you want to take it?
I'm pretty pleased with the board. I guess the residents, David Novak, and we'll be excited for our students. Uh so we have a memo that's dated January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh it's one question and your comment. Uh the question would be regarding some basic standards that I feel for uh veterinary offices and that would be asked, I thought, on that laser aspect of the building that's not fully changed at that occasion. Quite frankly, there's standards regarding peaking of animals overnight, causing a manual overnight holding floor area for animals. This addition is for an office space, so those aspects of the order is not really particularly important with this application. I just wanted to check, if there's animals being stored in the building, are they relatively far away from this addition? And the only reason I ask is there is a soundproofing regulation. So if the storage, I don't want to say storage space for animals, but if the storage space for animals is far away from the division, my assumption would be that the soundproofing aspect of the building is not affected by this addition.
That's correct.
Uh and then my comment would be, should this board approve this application? The only condition that I would offer is that the zoning tables be updated. Um just to reflect those additional bulk standards that are required for veterinary clinics, uh the site is going to be the R one C district. The R one C district is converted back to the R R C district specifically the standard for veterinary clinics. So there's different requirements for acreage for the setbacks. requirements for acreage for the setbacks that are about the night, just to reflect the zoning tables while they back, that'll be it.
The applicant has no issues with that condition.
Okay.
That's accurate.
Uh, and that's all I have. What other questions you have? Okay.
Anybody? Nope. Okay, John.
Good evening, Tom Taylor. We have brought a bunch of conditions in the memo dated January twenty-fifth. It seems like the applicant's engineers addressed all of those items. Um, and many of those items will appear on the drawings that they're going to submit to us later. With you as a date, uh, prior to, uh, final compliance memo revision by our office. So we do have a variety of conditions. If the board approves the application, we could go through the conditions. Uh, but it sounds like, it appears that all of the conditions are agreed to by the applicant.
That's correct.
Okay.
Does anyone have questions?
Anybody? Nope, they agree to all the conditions, so it's good.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan, you're up.
Evening, Dan Dubrowmowski. Um, I also had a report, January twenty-fifth, there, there were two points. The first one they've addressed, with the exception of just agreeing to show the easement related to the buffer on the survey they're gonna submit, so I believe there was an easement.
Yes, we'll provide that information.
And the reason we didn't see it's because they didn't provide the survey, so if they do that, I think they've given you evidence tonight that the buffer is in place. Uh, the second one is just saying there's no other landscape requirements, the materials, the planting around the base of the building that they've indicated is not specifically required, and we don't need to re-heel it. Um, that's just standard stuff that we cover.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anybody? Nope, moving, neck? Graphic?
This is quasi, we didn't receive this application, so we didn't reveal anything.
Okay.
They, they're, I did not send it to the traffic engineer, there was no need for them to re-heel it.
Right, 'cause there's no change in, got it, okay.
Right.
Okay, Jerry, you have all the conditions, waivers, uh, variances, you.
But I take it, and, and David, um, why don't you correct me if I'm wrong? So minor site plan approval, just that one variance with respect to the, uh, distance from the residential boundary line. I would agree with Mr. Flannery that since a variance had previously been granted, reducing that to eighty feet, and there, there is, you would use that as the metric, which means it would be a variance of one point um, eight-five, uh, feet. Um, then you have the waivers that we talked about. One is the paving, the fact that they, the area by the garage, the gravel area, is not gonna be paved. And then in terms of the number of parking spaces, since thirteen spaces previously have been approved, I think that number, the waiver should be four additional spaces. And then we, we talked about all, I, I don't know if there are any other waivers, there's a cou- couple of submission waivers.
I think the other time, the other time, it would be size of the parking spaces, so.
Yes, right.
Size.
Yeah.
Just had that section number up for you, Jerry, and I also.
And, and Mr. Walsh, while David is looking for that, you would indicated that some of the spaces were slightly smaller than the nine by eighteen required. How many spaces are we talking about?
Sir. All of them are substandard.
All of them, okay.
Uh, in some form or fashion.
Except for the ADA.
Except for the ADA.
Except for the, I'm sorry?
ADA.
The ADA space will be a hundred percent cat dorming.
Yeah.
What are the minimums, uh, that parking, yeah, minimum, what the minimum, I like, we have all of our standard, what's the minimum means? The length and width wise.
What's the length and width minimum of, uh, parking space?
I guess one way of asking is what's the smallest one?
Nine by eighteen is your standard. The, the narrowest one is about eight and a half feet, and the, the length is about seventeen feet. So about six inches in, in the width, and the, the length about a foot.
Okay. And that varies from space to space?
Correct.
And Jerry, that is section two hundred dash twenty-nine, and is in Michael, six A.
Thank you.
I had that number on.
And, um, I think, um, you're gonna, you're gonna provide the, the, the buffer's still in place. It's not a waiver or a variance or anything, but just evidence that the buffer's in place?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We'll, uh, mark that on the, the plan as well, so easement area.
Okay, anybody, uh, any, anything else? Any? Nothing, um, I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, you're right, public comment. Can I hear anybody from the public wish to comment on the application? Please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Okay, no public comments, so I'll entertain a motion.
Close the public comments?
What?
I.
Close the public comments. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Okay, public comments closed.
Just, just one item, in addition to the relief that I mentioned previously, and we've obviously gone through the conditions, which we go, could go through again, I don't think we need to, um, there were some submission waivers um, that the, uh, engineering office recommended not be, um, not be granted. Um, do you want to describe those at all, John?
First, the submission here, the, the, um, the question. Two that aren't related to the site plan. One is how we measure the distance between years. Street intersections, showing the distance between our street intersection. Uh, that one we didn't have any objection to, and we have another section which requires a eighty-foot long history of building. The applicants, uh, so I saw the draft that we updated today, and we upgraded when, including the long-haul information, turn of the compact, the compact metal before we did, and so that would be sufficient to the back.
Okay. I guess it, it looks to me like basically the submission waiver is that, that will be granted if it's the board's pleasure, or the, or the third and fourth bullets, is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Okay.
Are the conditions true?
Well.
I would suggest that the condition would be, the required, the debate would be required to provide the information and the vertical bullets.
Right.
And also, it would also be the time where parking is.
Yes. Right. The dimensions, yeah.
You good? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
In the matter of PB twenty-two dash zero four, Caden LLC, block twenty-five, lot twenty-five point zero one, sixteen seventy-six, Old Trenton Road. I move that the planning board, uh, prove the minor site plan and bulk variance with, uh, submission waivers, design waiver, and condition as outlined by council.
Second.
Okay, motion by Curtis Secmanis, uh, so can you please call the roll?
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Bag?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jivers?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberin?
Yes.
Chairman Carr?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
David. Nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, nineteen eighty-seven, uh, athletic.
I think we do, because, uh, they gotta leave.
I, I was.
Uh, five-minute recess for the, um, new application to set up.
We're spanking bank building on a pie-shaped slate or water very. Black past everything in the day, so. They didn't do it like that anymore, but I, I mean, no, 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 I was, I was thinking. Yeah. The, the, so, last time, you came before, uh, zoning board for the Gulf.
Stop and call, all right?
Stop call, okay, that's the site plan.
Good, thank you.
That, I, I see, I heard that here where they go, right? Seeing everyone here. Yeah, I'm good there. So is the record. Okay. We have the. They are cut out to dogs. Really? Yeah, they are, they actually just like rethink that. But the shadows, they, you know, we were pretty. You know, that's, it sounds sick. Uh, guaranteed, uh, allowable area, so. Yeah, they, they put the dog here, so I can give you the plan. Since a veteran. Sometimes you could still, actually, every. But I haven't realized. Yep, so you do a. Yeah, but I don't know what's going on. What's going on? I'll, I'll know it's a lot, a lot of us will release the stance. Is there a change in that? The only thing they're doing is the. They're changing circulation factors. The, 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 turning plate, well, turning plate was.
So. Susan, how we testing? Like, what do you want? I don't understand if you want to.
It's a.
Right, but first of all, this thing, I couldn't hear that. And.
I'll say Susan.
But that's not what she's looking for. She's looking, he said, she said. If that's what she wants, then he'll do seven pages, and he said, she said, but she's gotta tell me what she wants. She kept telling me, yeah, yeah. She's telling me. That's not what she wants. They want. I don't do that. So. Yeah, but I can do it all for this, I can do it all.
Fine, we'll work out that, we'll say, and this is more trying. No, we got one. Four, and then it's seven.
Glad that I didn't know her then.
Where's this, she was. I wanna know where she works, uh, she works this.
Now, let's call her, her period of times, she saw. I don't do that.
Which is over. It's good, I erase it, what, at what they're over a certain period of time? It, it said over a certain period of time, but then they go to say, they know three hundred thousand dollars. And it's like school search. Again, I gotta tell you, I've got my, uh.
You guys have snow here this morning, too? Snow here this morning, too. Down by the shore.
Really?
Um. We're back in session. Okay, next, uh, next on the agenda is, um, PB twenty-two dash oh seven, Nassar Park Floor and Decor Outlets, minus site plan and sign waiver, block seven, lot seventy-eight point oh one and seventy-eight point one nine. One hundred and one Nassar Park Blu- Boulevard, property zone B dash three, district MLUL two three twenty-three. This is for Floor and Decor Outlets of America, seeks minor site plan approval to occupy seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty square feet of the one-story building formerly known as Walmart at one oh one Nassar Park Boulevard for the uses of floor and decor hard surface flooring store. The building is part of a condominium, which, including common elements, encompasses sixty-three acres for the center as a whole. Applicat- applicant proposes to add a new loading dock, make improvements to the parking lot, and install customary signage. Applicant seeks variance for temporary signage, design standard exceptions relating to loading spaces, and the size of the building signage. Parking is proposed to increase by three spaces from five thousand five hundred and forty-three to five thousand five hundred and forty-six. Applications represented.
Mr. Chair, proof of publication and service, or an order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Uh, please speak into the mic.
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
Better, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Howard Genislaw from the law firm Gibbons PC, representing Floor and Decor Outlets of America. I'd like to give you a little background on the application and kind of give you a roadmap of how we see our presentation going tonight. Uh, Floor and Decor is a leading specialty retailer of hard surface flooring, offering a broad selection of tile, wood, stone, and related tools and flooring accessories. You'll hear a little more testimony about the company, uh, from the gentleman to my left in a little while. The existing building that Floor and Decor seeks to occupy is on lot seventy-eight point one nine, which is part of a condominium, and has associated common elements, uh, including parking, circulation, loading areas, et cetera, which are in lot seventy-eight point zero one. The existing building is a hundred twenty-nine thousand square feet in total, and was formerly occupied by Walmart. And of course, these lots are part of the larger Nassar Park Shopping Center. The portion of the building that, uh, Floor and Decor will be leasing is seventy-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three square feet. Uh, the condominium building is owned by OSJ of Princeton, New Jersey LLC. Uh, that is Ocean State Job Lot, and they will be retaining the remaining portion of the building. Floor and Decor proposes to fit up its part of the building with a retail store, to improve the building with a new loading dock, to serve its store, to make certain improvements to the parking lot, and to update the facade of the building. The approvals that are being sought tonight as part of this application are minor site plan approval. We're seeking two variances, both relating to temporary signage, and we're seeking three design standard exceptions. Uh, those exceptions are related to the number of loading spaces, and the other two relate to the size and letter height of the identification sign that's proposed on the front wall of the building. We've also requested six submission waivers, which are identified in the Township Engineers Report. The engineers, um, have no objection to granting those waivers. They, they all basically pertain to either information, uh, for things that don't exist on this property, or for showing only information involving the immediate area of improvements, rather than for the entirety of the shopping center. Uh, so the relevant information is shown for the area in which the improvements are proposed. In terms of our presentation this evening, uh, I'm anticipating calling four witnesses. The first will be a representative from Floor and Decor, who can describe the company and provide some operating. who can describe the company and provide some operational background. Second witness will be the civil engineer. The third witness will be the architect. And the fourth witness will be the professional planner uh, to talk about the variances and the design standard exceptions. I also have with us our traffic engineer, which I'm not intending to call unless there's a specific question, since there's very little traffic impact associated with the application. And so that is basically an overview of our proposed presentation. Unless there are any questions from the board at this time, I would proceed to begin presenting witnesses.
Sure. You want to have your witnesses stand up? Well.
We'll. 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 All in the same time?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could each raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth? So just want to affirm, if you could go around, give your full names, spell your last name. If we could start with this gentleman next to the council.
Uh, my name is Alexander Shpore. S H P O R E R. Uh, with Floor and Decor.
Why don't we go in the order that they're going to testify? If that's all right?
That makes sense.
Okay.
My name is. Jersey.
My name is George. Phanos. I'm in. Salmo. That day in the. I am. Was. As we have that office. Um. I'm just an architect in New Jersey and the other states. And my license is firm. I have a bachelor degree in Fisher. I have a master's degree in. And I'm. I've got. Certified. In. And yeah.
Okay.
Donna Holm. Please. H O L N. U B. I S T. I'm the CEO and founder of the. First planning group by licensed professional. Tennessee State of New Jersey.
And how'd you spell your last name? If you could do that again.
H O. L N. U. B. Like. Victor. I S T.
And counsel, yeah.
In the back.
We got into qualifications. So if you could just qualify the other witnesses who didn't give.
Sure. Sure. And in the back, there is Mr. Gibson, who's the traffic engineer. Just in case we need him, why don't we take care of him as well at this point?
Adam Gibson. G I. D. Is. That's the.
Thank you. Anybody else?
That should cover it as far as witnesses and we'll maybe do a little further qualification as I call each one.
Sure. That'd be great.
Okay, who's first?
Okay, so. So to my left is Alexander Shpore. Mr. Shpore, could you describe for the board by whom you're employed and what your role is in that position?
Um, I'm. My name is Alexander Shpore. I am employed by Floor and Decor. I am the construction planning design manager and have been directly overseeing this project, managing the design and entitlements for Floor and Decor.
A little bit. A little bit about your own background in terms of professional experience, relevant degrees, licensure, if any.
I have a Masters of Architecture from Tulane University and a Bachelor's of Business Management from Tulane as well. Um, have been working on the client representative side for the last seven years. Uh, I am a licensed architect in the state of North Carolina. And as I mentioned, I have been directly managing this project for Floor and Decor from the beginning.
And just to be clear, Mr. Shpore is being offered as a company representative, not as a, as an expert architect. Uh, we have Mr. Phanos is the architect who will be testifying later on. Um. So, Mr. Shpore, what I'd like to do is ask you to begin, if you could, by describing for the board in a little bit more detail, uh, what type of business Floor and Decor is involved in, where they currently have stores, to give the board some background for anyone who may not be familiar with with the company and with their operation.
Sure. Floor and Decor is a national retailer that specializes in hard surface flooring and accessory products. As our licensed name is, we specialize in tile, wood, and stone, and we sell all products that you need to install those additional items. We operate currently a hundred and eighty-three stores and are growing very rapidly. Um, currently, we're in thirty-three major metropolitan markets. Um, as of today, we have five stores currently in New Jersey, which are in Elizabeth, Moorestown, Paramus, Tom's River, and Wayne.
So let's move on to some operational information now. Could you describe for the board what the typical hours of operation will be for the store?
So store hours Monday through Friday are seven AM to seven PM. Saturdays eight AM to seven PM. Sundays are ten AM to six PM. Those are hours currently nationwide, but we would ask for a little bit of flexibility to adjust hours in the future as the market and business development requires.
And how about in terms of the number of employees that you would anticipate for the store?
Um, weekdays, we have twenty-five full-time employees and fifteen part-time employees that start at seven AM and go till five PM. Five PM to closing, it drops down to twenty full-time and ten part-time. On weekends, we have thirty full-time employees and twenty part-time employees from open till five PM. And then five PM to closing is twenty-five full-time and fifteen part-time. And again, these are based on our averages and this is um, adjustable to the market conditions as we begin to operate the store.
Let's now turn our attention to truck deliveries. Can you describe for the board uh, how often truck deliveries take place and at what time of day?
Sure. Every, uh, five days a week, we will typically have four to eight deliveries of additional product to the store. That varies depending on the time of year and um, how product is moving. These deliveries start at seven PM when the store closes and they run about every two hours. We'll have one truck every two hours.
So let's talk a little bit about when you get to deliveries, how the how the unloading works. Now, the application that's before the board requests a design standard exception for number of loading spaces for a store of the size five would technically be required under the code, and we're proposing two. So can you speak to the adequacy of the two loading spaces that are being proposed?
Sure. Our typical, all of our stores typically will have two loading docks. We only receive one truck at a time. The reason why we go for two loading docks is to have a backup. So two loading docks will be more than enough for our store operations. Um, as I mentioned, our loading docks, our loading time starts at seven PM. So, um, and they'll run every two hours. That leaves plenty of time in between deliveries to make sure that the two loading docks will be more than sufficient. As I mentioned, typically only one loading dock is used.
Now, the other part of the building that's going to be occupied by Ocean State Job Lot, per the code, would require four loading spaces, and they will be left with the existing two. So were you given any information about what their loading requirements are?
So Ocean State Job Lot only also utilizes their only two delivery spots. They typically receive deliveries between five AM and nine AM, three to four times a week. Um, this way, there will be no overlap between our delivery times.
And that information, just for the record, concerning Ocean State's deliveries, was provided to us by way of a letter, which is included in your application materials as part of the project description. The entire letter is actually reproduced. Uh, what Mr. Shpore just described is essentially a summary of the information that's contained in that letter, but that's, that's the source of that information. Now, the uh, the application proposes an outdoor propane storage cabinet. And one of the comments in the engineering review letter was to confirm that the use of those propane tanks was for private use and not retail sales. So could you describe the purpose of the propane storage cabinet and how it'll be utilized?
Correct. We do have a couple of forklifts that will run on propane. We do have a propane cabinet that we maintain just to be able to shift, switch out the propane for that forklift. It is for our use only. It will be, there will have no propane for sale. Um.
So there's no switching out of propane tanks like you see at hardware stores or anything? This is entirely for.
It's entirely for internal use and it'll only be used by Floor and Decor employees.
Okay. Now, I'd like to.
I'm sorry. You can have a question. You're going to switch out tanks for the forklifts? Or you you're going to fill the tanks that are on the forklift?
Switch out tanks on the forklift.
Okay. Thank you.
So let's talk now about customer pickups and how that process works now. Your tile store, you of course sell heavy products in large amount. You also sell smaller items like tools and things like that. So could you describe how your customer pickup process works, both for smaller items that a customer might say order online as well as for a customer that might come in and want to buy a pallet of tile?
Sure. So, um, one of our main items that we always uh, advertise is we have a million square feet of job lot quantity tile in our store at any given time. Um, we do have about sixty percent contractors that will use us, and they will buy job lot quantity of tile. We will hold that tile for them until they're ready for pickup when their job site requires it. Um, contractors will typically arrive either in a Sprinter van pickup truck. Um. Kind of a small work kind of truck to receive that tile. Um, when they get to the store to pick up a larger order like that, they'll go to our customer pickup area, otherwise known as a CPU. Um, and when they get there, they'll be either able to text to let the store know that they're there, or they'll go inside to the customer pickup lobby and let the store know that they're ready to pick up that order. Um. We will then load the order into their car. Um, if it's a larger order, they'll pull into one of our pickup spots, which will be placed in their car with the forklift. If it's a smaller order, sometimes when they text, an employee will run it out. If it's a small item, like a small box of tile or a single bag of grout just to. Um. Case of contractor, somebody forget what they wanted, forgot one piece.
And at this store, where is the CPU going to be located?
So in this store, the CPU is located in the back, right next to our loading docks. Um. CPU hours, our customer pickup hours is seven to seven, so it doesn't interfere at all with our loading docks. Um, there are a number of stores that we currently operate. The closest one to here being Garden City, New York, that does have our customer pickup in the rear next to loading docks. So we don't foresee ever having a conflict with our customer pickup area being in this portion of the store.
And why, why is it sited in the rear of the store at this particular location?
Um, for this location, we've had to locate the CPU in the rear of the store because having cars come across the front drive aisle and sidewalk regularly was not allowed through um, the town or the landlord. Um. This would have gotten in the way of fire lanes and having that traffic is um, in the center of the shopping center um, would not have created a good opportunity for pedestrians walking along that sidewalk.
And how will customers know that they're supposed to go to the rear of the store in order to access the customer pickup area? How will that be communicated to them?
Um, this will be communicated to them um, internally as well as we'll, we'll look into putting in directional signage to show customers how to get to that back area.
I'm not sure if you mentioned this yet, but how long is a typical pickup time when a customer arrives and until they leave to get loaded up or to have a product brought out to them?
So a typical loadout time can be anywhere from, it's typically ten to fifteen minutes. Um, if it's a small item, it could go a little bit faster. If it's a very large order that's multiple pallets, it could be a little bit longer, but typically it's ten to fifteen minutes from when a customer shows up and they're pulling out.
Let's turn our attention now to frequency of trash pickups. Can you address that, please?
Sure. Um, we will have a dumpster on site that will be internally directly connected to the store through a trash store. Uh, dumpsters, pickups are varied per store based on however or that store needs. It can vary anywhere from three times a week to once every three weeks, just depending on how much trash that store is generating at the time.
And what provisions are there for recycling?
Um, recycling, we do have a recycling container on site that will be for pallets and cardboard. Um, and that's sent to our recycling, to our recycling provider.
Thank you. Those are all the questions I have on direct for Mr. Shpore.
Can I ask a question right now? Uh, you mentioned that you have typical two loading docks in your stores throughout the country. What size of stores are typically you have in the rest of the places? Same seventy-six thousand this area or less or more?
Our average store, we average around eighty thousand square feet. Usually it's between seventy-five to eighty thousand. We have started working on a smaller concept that's closer to fifty-five, but the vast majority of our stores are right around eighty thousand square feet. This would be, on average, the same size as most of our stores.
Thank you.
So what was it again? The total loading docks that that are there now and you're going to? Like you.
So we will provide a total of four loading docks. Two will be for Ocean State and two will be for Floor and Decor.
And there's five required, I believe, right?
There's, there's five required for Floor and Decor, and there's four required for Ocean State Job Lot. So there's actually a total of nine, I believe, is what's required. And currently, I believe there's two. Our, our engineer will speak to that in more detail when he testifies.
So for the entire building, nine is required and you're proposing two and two?
Correct.
Okay.
Good question. Like I, from what I read, you're not taking over all the Walmart space. So what's the, the remaining space? Is somebody else going to take it or?
The remaining space is going to be retained by Ocean State Job Lot, and they're opening a store there.
So is that going to be a separate type of application? Is this all bundled in together?
That. That's. We are not associated with Ocean State as far as the application. Um, I'd understood from a discussion I had previously with, with Mr. Sertes that they may not require board approval. I'm not sure what their status is, but they're not part of this application. We simply wanted to identify what the loading requirements were, since we're seeking the design standard exception. And as you'll see later, at the request of the board's professionals, we've shown uh, what of, what the facade would look like of the entire building, and we've shown their signage as well as our signage, so that the board can get the full picture of what the building will look like. Uh, but they are not a part of this application.
The parking spaces that you mentioned, fifty-five, forty-six, they are for both like uh, uh, Floor and Decor and Ocean State or just Floor and Decor only?
Well, the, the parking is for the entirety of, of the center. Well, the, the parking is for the entirety of, of the center. That's not, it, that covers the five thousand some odd parking spaces as far. That covers way more than just flooring decor and Ocean State Job Lot. That's, that's the entirety of lot seventy-eight oh one, which serves a number of different retail stores. And we're, we're increasing that by three by way of striping several spaces in the loading area, which our engineer can speak to when he testifies.
Boss, you mentioned your hours of operation, let's say Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM. A lot of people, you know, work, go home, eat, and then they wanna go out, maybe do some shopping. Uh have you ever considered opening later to like eight or nine?
So these are our hours that we have nationally across all our stores. Flooring is not a. It's about sixty percent of our customers are contractors, forty percent are do-it-yourselfers. Um this is not a business and we. We'll get into a little bit more, I think, with, if we get into traffic. We're not a business that has a lot of kind of walk-in people looking to just. Randomly shop. Um the individuals we service to will usually see once to three times in a lifetime. Our general contractors come during the day because that's their business hours. Um but we are open on the weekend and that's where we see a lot of the do-it-yourselfers.
And I can, I can add to that just based on testimony. I've heard in other applications I've done for flooring decor that. The operating hours actually used to be longer and then during COVID, they were shortened for a variety of reasons. And I think the intent is to continue those hours for the foreseeable future.
Anybody else? Okay, next, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Sporer. Next witness will be Tony Diggan, the civil engineer. So Mr. Diggan, why don't we just qualify you in a little bit more detail and then you can go over to the board and we'll mark your exhibits. Mr. Diggan was previously sworn, uh you gave a few tidbits, but why don't you give the board a little bit more background on your experience and credentials, please?
Sure. The name is Tony Diggan, employed by Kimley Horn. Uh at three oh one Carnegie Center Boulevard, suite two oh two here in town. Uh with a Princeton address zero eight five four zero. I oversee uh land development services in New Jersey for Kimley Horn. Uh been in practice for over twenty, twenty-five years. Have licenses and good standing in Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey, and I've appeared before this board uh several times.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So maybe Mr. Diggan should go over by the exhibit so that he can reference it. Uh at this point, I'm anticipating three exhibits, so why don't we? Mark each of those now and identify it for the record if that's okay, and then you can go through your presentation.
Sure. The first exhibit is going to be A one.
Yes.
And this is an aerial exhibit prepared by my firm, which is a hundred scale exhibit. North is planned up, if you will, and it was prepared today. The next exhibit is the site plan that was submitted as part of the application, uh sheet C three hundred. I'm marking this in as A two. The third exhibit is a signage exhibit prepared by my firm dated. January uh eleventh. Twenty twenty-two. And basically, this is a, an exhibit of similar signs throughout the center, uh which we'll talk about later. This is gonna be A three.
And what's the date again to that? The date, the date again of the exhibit?
Date of exhibit is January eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, I think that was submitted with the application and I, I think it was probably intended to be twenty twenty-three, but it does in fact say twenty twenty-two on it. Okay, so Mr. Diggan, if you would please uh review for the board.
One more hour.
Oh, that's right. We want to mark that one too.
Yeah, so uh this last exhibit is A four and this is a sign, yeah, signage exhibit showing the temporary signage and its location. That's A four and it's prepared by Anchor Sign and last revised date was September seventh, twenty twenty-two. Last revised date was November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Great, thank you. So if you could orient the board to the site, please, and walk them through the high points of the proposal from a civil engineering perspective.
All right, so. Right this way. So the, the, the um. Block seven, lot seventy-eight oh one is the larger block, the sixty-three acre uh portion uh in yellow. And lot seventy-eight nineteen, uh as was testified to before, this is a condo. So each of the buildings have a separate um lot number. And seventy-eight nineteen is the former uh Walmart store, about a hundred twenty-nine thousand square feet. Again, this is in the Nassau uh Nassau Park Shopping Center. Uh the parking field that was alluded to earlier, over five thousand parking spaces is in this area. Uh on the entirety of lot seventy-eight oh one. Uh the store is located in the uh, it's called the northern portion or perhaps the northeast portion of seventy-eight oh one. And it's bounded by uh Nassau Park Boulevard to the uh north and east, if you will. And Route one is obviously uh down the southeast. Um the existing uh parking field, a portion of it will be. Restriped by uh flooring decor and I'll show you that on A two. It's in this area here. And uh this is the area, the loading area, we're gonna be looking at on my site plan, also A two. Yeah, this is A two. As, as we uh discussed, we're gonna occupy seventy-six thousand uh two hundred and eighty-three square feet of the former Walmart store. The dash line shows the uh generally demised area, if you will. Job lots will retain these two loading docks in the northeast corner of the building. And there'd be a long um circulation uh hallway to those loading docks. Uh our proposed improvements in the loading dock area are inclusive of the addition of two new loading docks. Uh two customer pickup spaces and three um. We call I'm here spaces. These are the spaces that uh we referred to earlier where people. If they order online, they can pull in there and if it's a smaller item, uh the. Floor and decor employee will walk out to the uh car to deliver that item. If the items are larger, uh perhaps a larger contractor order, they would pull uh back into the store here. And um that order be loaded by forklift.
Tony, um that loading area, that loading yard is also. Uh correct me if I'm wrong, is also shared by PetSmart, correct?
Correct.
And but you don't anticipate any. Um uh traffic flow issues with uh and that's uh for PetSmart, it's only uh deliveries. It's not like they have customer service at the, the back of their store. I do not think so.
That's correct.
Okay, um it's not like, do you anticipate any uh crossover or or? Uh anticipated traffic flow issues with their deliveries?
Yeah, so from a conflict standpoint, no. Uh their loading area is over here. Um our loading area is in these areas here, uh the two loading docks on this uh northeastern face of the building. And then as we had talked about our. Uh from our, the face of our loading dock over to the other side, there would have to be in excess of three or four hundred feet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we submitted uh uh truck circulation plans uh showing both the circulation for W B sixty-sevens. And uh fire and emergency vehicles, which showed adequate circulation. Uh while we're on it though, so we'll avoid the question later on, there is another application here uh that has a loading area. In this portion here across the dock and that's also not anticipated to cause any conflict with our circulation.
So all your deliveries are in fifty foot, uh fifty-three feet trailers?
Yeah, W B's, yep. Um there was talk of the uh location of the um. Um propane storage tank or storage shed, if you will. Uh that is in this area here. Along this wall, there's a, and basically this area will be regraded. Uh drainage patterns maintained, no drainage issue is gonna be there. Uh there'd be a retaining wall in this area and then this will be a sunken dock.
Yeah, I mean, how many propane tanks you need at one time?
Um sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Yeah, he uh repeat your question.
Uh how many propane tanks do you need at one time? I mean, one lasts for several days.
I believe you asked how many propane tanks at one time. Uh so there typically be one or two forklifts, so one or two um. Well, they would have two tanks in use and so I'd imagine that would store somewhere in the order of two to four and then they would take subsequent deliveries. And I don't know if you've seen them before, but they have a strap-on container, uh basically like you're changing the gas.
Yeah, so it's not like you have fifty stored there.
Correct.
Uh this is a question for Sam uh in relation to this part of the, of the property. Now, um and this is more of a, a bigger scale question because I, I, I'm still concerned about deliveries and stuff like that. Okay, on the opposite side of uh Ocean State Job Lot, not on the floor and decor. Shared side, there is the old existing at this time, the existing greenhouse structure. That used to be part of the Walmart. It is, could that be developed into a commercial, another commercial use?
Yes.
That square, that square footage was part of the overall Nassau Park approval, so yeah, they could convert that square footage into other retail.
Let me swear, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you've given and will give, has been and will be the truth?
I do.
Now, having said that, Sam, that it could possibly be developed at a future time as a, as a commercial use, correct?
They could remove that structure and rebuild it as a more brick and mortar type store there that looked where the greenhouse was, correct?
Okay, but, but it seems to me due to the nature of the site and the nature of the, where the delivery yard is. Um it's, it seems like that that possible future retailer would not have. Uh a delivery space similar to what? Because I, I mean, Ocean State Job Lot right now is sort of like a flag lot in terms of that long passage from the delivery area to get to the retail. Big, um you know, uh because it's not like floor and decor goes all the way back to the, to the boulevard. They have, there's the, that, the white, if you look on the plan, there's that white area that's accessed from delivery. To the like storage area of Ocean State Job Lot. But it's, it seems to me that the, if there was a future retailer on the other side of Ocean State Job Lot, they would not have. Access to this whole delivery yard. My, what, am I correct in understanding that? In understanding the site?
That's correct. And if they were to use the, that square footage for anything other than accessory to the um. The ocean facility, they'd have to come back in front of this board. In any case, and if they're gonna need some kind of loading dock or something, they would have to get site plan approval from this board.
Right, or if they even build a more permanent structure there, that would come before our review.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh one other thing that was uh raised in the uh review, one of the review letters is the. Uh recycling bin area, again, it's along this uh retaining wall, uh straight out. Probably uh sixty plus feet away from the, the stairwell in the loading dock area. And that's intended to be a steel uh recycling container, your, your common steel bin, if you will. Um there's also a trash impactor uh in this area in the existing loading area. Uh which floor and decor would have access to. From a, uh there's a question about the, uh how a temporary uh generator would be connected. There's a, a generator connection uh port in this area here that would go back to uh the mechanical room for floor and decor. Um that would, the uh generator would sit in front of one of the loading doors. Again, this would be on a temporary uh basis. Uh as was alluded to before, uh based on our square footage, we are required to have five loading spaces. Uh we are proposing two and uh based on prior testimony, that is adequate for our, our use. I guess just to recap, in the loading area, we don't anticipate any uh circulation or conflict issues. Uh with the uh motoring public and our deliveries based on the timing of those deliveries. And um I think that's all I have for the loading area. I'll come back, I'll do signage, I'll walk through signage last, uh come back out front here of the store. Uh you can see the parking field here. In front of the store, let's call it, south of the store is shaded, that is uh floor and decor's parking area. Again, it's shared, it's approximately two hundred spaces, um is part of that five thousand five hundred forty-three. Existing spaces, again, that would go to five thousand five hundred forty-six. In addition, there was the opportunity to add two ADA spaces here. Um the grades worked out, so we did convert two of the regular stalls to two additional ADA spaces. Uh generally speaking, uh there will be um. There'd be uh pave, patch and, and seal, but basically rehab the parking lot, uh parking lot we restripped. In the uh traffic review letter, there was uh comment about receiving a detail for the, the striping. We'll provide that detail, but in essence, it's the same crosswalk that's throughout the entirety of the, the center.
Yeah, propane tank cabinet, that's new, like that's not existing there, is it?
Correct.
Right, um the chief, uh E M S Chief Timothy Lynch, have any suggestions for like fire suppression there? Should there be any kind of little explosion or something there, any, anything?
I don't recall him saying anything about that, but that's, it's fairly standard, that cabinet, storage cabinet. Not sure, I don't believe we have um bottles on that either. It's fairly standard practice to have them stored in the cabinet.
Like fire extinguishers nearby or anything like that?
Uh not to my knowledge, no.
I- is the cabinet similar to what they have at Home Depot or Lowe's as far as like you go to exchange your propane tank for your home use? Something like that?
It, it would be similar, but in my experience, these are typically a little beefier.
Yeah, that's what I, okay. Sure. Okay, and there's a sprinkler system, right? Okay. Linda, is that okay?
Where, where the fire, where the propane tanks, is that, is that outside?
I think we're gonna probably need to swear him and he, he will go through that later on though.
Yeah, maybe hold that question until.
Linda.
The architectural testimony.
I mean, like the cross, Home Depot has fifty tanks outside. That's why I asked whether you need more than two.
Like fire hookup is, I don't know if it's right next to it or it's inside, that's one, that's all I'm asking. I know if there's a code that the. Hookup has to be.
Linda, Chief Lynch has looked at the plans. He'll have an opportunity to look at the plans for resolution compliance and the applicants could also have to apply for. Various building plumbing fire permits. Once they get through resolution compliance, so Mr. Lynch will have two other times to review it to make sure it meets code.
Uh from a utility standpoint, kind of going along with utilities, uh we're reusing the existing utilities. Uh we've been, I think we went through two T R Cs, um I've heard some of that feedback, so obviously we changed the plan to reflect that. Uh one of the things was, uh we're gonna um not impact the uh area adjacent to the loading area with another transformer. So we're able to use the existing transformer and make uh longer runs to our panel and our mechanical room. Think that's all I had prior to getting into signage. Are any?
Just, just hit landscaping and lighting quickly?
Yeah, so uh. Lighting was adequate throughout the, obviously the parking field uh south of the store. Um generally adequate in the loading area, but we are adding uh two wall packs uh above the um customer pickup area.
And there was a comment, I think, from the landscape architect as far as replacement of missing or damaged landscape materials. Could you briefly? Address that in the, in the area where we're committing to doing that?
Yeah, uh Mr. Dover Melski's letter uh indicated, as it often does, that we should replace dead and dying trees throughout the uh parking field. And I do believe that um the landlord got in touch with Mr. Dover Melski's office and agreed to do that.
But, okay, so why don't we turn to signage at, at this point?
Good question.
Uh any structural modifications to the building that you have? Are you planning any structural modifications?
I believe the answer is yes, but I am uh not the architect, so I think George.
That would be for the architect who will be the next witness.
Okay, uh another question I have, same thing, my architect can answer this question. How are the uh uh going to plan to divide the building between the deck, uh the floor and decker and the ocean estate? I don't proposing a wall or something?
It'll be a demising wall, but he'll be far more articulate.
Maybe, of course, I have one question on C seven hundred. It's yours, architect?
That's mine.
I mean, just, I can explain, okay? On sheet seven hundred. Seven hundred? You have somewhere mentioned. Know what we call C three hundred, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that's a site plan here.
Yes. In some area, you see. For wood, heavy duty concrete, can you explain what it is?
Yes, sir. Uh so you're gonna have heavy-duty asphalt, so when we regrade this area here where the customer pickup is gonna be. That asphalt will be replaced with heavy-duty asphalt, so it's a little heavier than what's in a parking field. And then the concrete is ostensibly a concrete slab, reinforced concrete slab.
Why you say heavy-duty concrete? It's a concrete slab?
That's what the name of the detail is. It's so, so it's not, so put it this way, a concrete slab could mean a four, six inch slab, like a six inch slab for. Uh you know, not generator per se, but like a trash area, but heavy-duty concrete slab is typically indicative of eight inches. Sure, heavy-duty though. Yeah, should every, yeah, should reinforcement, I'm sorry.
Trucks are, you know, picking up materials that are very.
Correct.
This is, I'm the second year, I spent all my life on concrete design.
Oh, you gotta talk to George.
We never do some heavy-duty concrete. We eight inch slab or six inch slab or twelve inch slab, it's still concrete slab.
I, I'll grant you that, but it's probably about forty-five hundred PSI or greater.
Still, we have five thousand PSI or six thousand PSI also.
That sounds heavy-duty.
I agree, okay.
Right.
It's sema, it's semantics. Okay, so we, so why don't we place heavy-duty with the thickness of this slab?
I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay, there, there you go. There's the solution. Twelve inches, fourteen inches, size, the, uh size matters here.
So why don't we turn our attention to signs?
Actually, I got one more question. I'm looking at the, the site plan, and Tony, you talked about the compactor, correct?
Correct.
What, is there also a recycling container?
Yes, the recycling, the compactor is in the existing loading dock area here.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the recycle bin is over here and the newly created loading dock.
And, and that, that, that's not going to interfere with the trucks going in and out?
Correct, yes, it's in line with the stairwell at the end, the.
Okay, I, now I see it. Would, I know it's outside your purview, but. Will, do we have any idea if Ocean State Job Lot's going to have need and have their own compactor in recycling bin, or is there space for such? Do we have any idea on that soon? No?
I would think.
You know, it's really limited what's left over for.
There is a, there is a representative from Ocean State.
Okay, are you gonna have your own compactor and trash?
You need to be signed here.
If you could, if you could raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth? So sworn, affirm, please tell your full name and spell your last name.
And could, could you just explain to the board what your relationship is to A job, what your, to Ocean State rather, what your position is, your relation to this project, and then if you could answer that question, please?
I might want you to come to a mic.
Yeah, if you want to come over here and use the mic.
Well, no, we, we, we have recording devices that you got everything. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, I'm Lisa Baxter, I'm Director of Construction for Ocean State Job Lot. And we will be occupying the right side of the space that's being discussed today. We are using the two existing loading docks. We will have a bale or inside of the space for our cardboard and, and so, but we will not have use of a compactor. You know, similar to what's there now, no, we won't be using that one.
So are you gonna have need for an exterior dumpster?
I believe they do have an exterior dumpster plan, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Again, I've just taken this over more recently. We had a project manager on the project that has separated from the company, so I am kind of picking it up and trying to get it back on track.
I, I mean, I'm, the reason I'm asking these Ocean State questions is, you know, it's, it's getting kind of tight back here. And to, with the, the, the compactors and the, the, you know, the loading docks for both places, as well as having exterior items necessary for refuse, like the recycling bin area, which, it sounds like Ocean State, you're gonna do that internally.
Correct.
Keep that, but it seems to me that there might be need at some point in your planning for an exterior dumpster, for your, your refuse.
And I will confirm that, but I imagine that most of our locations do have a dumpster location, but again, I don't have the plans with me, so I can't confirm right now. I know a question did come up on the Garden Center, we are not leasing that space out, we are using the Garden Center, so.
No, the reason I say is it, it's, it seems to me that there need to be access for vehicles to take away items from the compactor. And yet I don't see anywhere else in that little yard there where the compactor, where the compactor is for yet another dumpster that would not interrupt flows of getting rid of refuse and compacted items. I'm looking at sheet C300.
I mean, is there existing dumpster there?
I, I don't know.
I mean, Curtis, if you go to any mall at the back with a lot of restaurants, each one of them have a different dumpster. I mean, it's not that, and compactor wins, once you compact the thing, they wrap it with a wire and put it aside on a, on a pallet. And then whichever truck comes and takes it.
Yeah, but.
They'll, they'll have to figure it out.
That's another, forget it.
It's a different application, they'll have to figure it out. Every store has, every store has their own dumpster out back, right? Everyone.
No, no, they don't share dumpster, Walmart, you don't share the dumpster.
Well, I mean, that's something that'll have to be resolved when Ocean State comes.
Have an application for us and they'll say where the dumpster is going to be.
Yeah, so why don't we move on to signage?
Yep.
And you can briefly outline what's proposed. What I'm going to ask Mr. Diggan to do is just identify where the signage is located. You can add any additional comments you have, and then our architect and our planner will be further addressing signage when they testify.
Sure, sure. So we had talked about needing design exception, or design exception relief for sign size and variance relief for number and I believe size of the temporary signage. So I'm going to show you, oh, one last thing, there's, there's a three monument signs where, once permitted, again, this is existing non-conformity. All we're doing in the empty panel is adding in the floor and decor placard. Those, those monument signs are located in this area. One at this driveway here, and one at the main driveway, sorry if you can't see that here. So those three, at the present time, have a blank spot, which presumably was previously Walmart and our floor and decor placard would go on those three monument signs. In addition, we're proposing. We're proposing a customer pickup sign in this area, approximately twenty-five square feet. A, with twelve inch lettering, I believe that sign conforms, we're proposing directional style signage. The label, I'm here for these three customer spots here. And we have a wall sign on this, it's called the southern facade, if you will, with floor and decor, the standard wall sign, which will be presented. But I do have an exhibit for that wall signage as it relates and or compares to the other signage in the center. I think it was also pointed out Mr. Novak's letter. Again, our, our signage is a hundred, sorry, hundred forty-five square feet. And Dick's sign is about two hundred forty square feet. The Raymore Flanagan is three hundred forty square feet. And the one that looks, I'd say, most similar to what we're proposing aesthetic wise, the TJ Maxx sign, which is a more recent approval, is sitting around three hundred square feet. If you look back here, A1, if you look across that lot, we do encounter, particularly in the winter, approximately thousand foot sightlines, because you can still see that facade all the way back at the rear of the center. So that would be important to us to have that, that larger size sign. And then moving on to the temporary signage. We're proposing, I don't know if you can see it here, this area, actually presently fenced off today. We're going to have a now hiring sign, a coming soon sign. And then there would be a grand opening sign that would go on the facade. My understanding is it's a now hiring, coming soon, would be up together on the fence. And then with the, the grand opening, the fence would be down and it'll only be the, the grand opening sign displayed. So we'd be, I believe, fine for number in that case. And our planner, we'll go into more depth on the relief requested for those.
What's this schedule right now?
Schedule?
Yeah.
Get through this board and get through resolution compliance, and then, as, you know. I assume as soon as.
As soon as possible, yeah.
I need flooring myself.
That's everything I have for Mr. Diggan.
Can you just go quickly back to the other board?
Yes. Again, this was A4, I'm gonna go back to A3, yes?
It's the same size as TJ Maxx?
Well, no, it's going to be the same aesthetic, but TJ Maxx is two hundred and eighty-nine square feet. And Burlington, somewhat similar, it's four hundred and five square feet, we are a hundred and forty-five square feet. And I believe the original Walmart application approved a hundred and fifty square feet, but perhaps the ordinance changed since that approval.
Yeah, I just want your sign and I guess the ocean sign, you know, not one so big and then one small.
Yeah, no, I think we do have an exhibit showing both the ocean job lot, yeah, that'll be coming up.
That's all I have for Mr. Diggan at this point.
Okay. Who's up next?
Next will be George Fanoz, our architect.
Sure.
I believe George gave most of his qualifications earlier when he was sworn. Was there anything that you wanted to add, or did that pretty much cover it? Your license is currently valid in New Jersey?
Yeah, I'm, I'm currently licensed in Jersey, my, my license isn't good to stand.
Good, okay.
How do you spell your last name again?
F A N O U S Fanoz.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Fanoz, what I'd like to ask you to do is if you could begin with the, with the building elevation and describe for the board the, the building appearance that's proposed, and then move into signage, and then we can take any questions the board may have. I think we should mark your exhibits first, so let's start with the exterior elevation exhibit. If you could just identify it for the board, I believe that would be A4?
A5.
I'm sorry, A5, correct, we're up to A5. So let's mark the exterior elevations, A5, and if you could just indicate for the record, the preparer and the date. Correct, A5. Okay, then let's go to the front. Actually, let's just recite into the record, please, and then we'll move on to the next.
Great, so we're, we're gonna give the lead description about floor and decor, typical, it's, it's typical elevations. Floor and decor, they have a few elements mark their store. One of them is their entrance, and the sign bench is defined by two towers, and they are urban brands. And we have white back for the signage. And they also have three color bands for other stores. We have the pilasters on the front facade, and also they have red coping. This is a, a four element that define floor and decor building. In this case, because we have strong picture in the center, so we try to mix our design with the existing design of the center. So what we did is I'm going to show, can I move to the next page just to?
Yeah, let's, let's just note for the record that what's been marked as A5 is she A201, prepared by SBLM, and I, I believe the revision date on that is January 11th, 2023, on A5, is that correct? On A5, just confirm if you will, the revision date is January 11th, 2023?
Yes.
Okay, great, okay, then let's go on to the front facade view, which we can mark as A6. A6 is sheet A201B as in boy, prepared by SBLM, and I, that also is last revised, January 11th, 2023? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, please continue.
And I just want to reference this elevation, he went through the existing, the whole, they show what, whether they are removing what is innovation. So we moved this tower element to the side of the elevation, just to keep the picture standing with the center. And this way we can prevent rolling before and keep the perfect identity. And in the meantime, preserve the center. So we're preparing these to supply and data. It's another side with the other tenant that we took a time, and this is our side next to each other. And we try to mimic this quality. Next to our elevation, so this way we just expect for ourselves to put one identity. And this is, it was me and us, and we have this with our channel.
Any ballisters in front there?
No, we didn't, we, we, we get up on the three, then.
We do have some color samples if anyone wants to see them.
Yeah.
Nice excuse.
And the only comment is that we will have to use a blue color on the, on the end of steel.
Shopping carts are inside, outside?
I have your full plan if I can reference that.
Please. Yeah, why don't we, why don't we mark that also? George, why don't we mark that as an exhibit as well, that would be A7? And if you could just identify the sheet number on that, please, and the date.
January 11th?
Um, so, what's the sheet number?
E101.
Thank you.
And this is sort of program and all the discussion before about the mind of the world between us and Russian state, and this is the one we want to do.
Now, George, I believe there was a question earlier about the building being sprinkled, if you could respond to that?
Yeah, the building is fully sprinkled from the side. And the demising wall is built out of fire rated partition. And metal start with gypsum boarding each side and five cop to the top. And this also is the core that.
Is it three hour fire, fire radiant wall?
Fire rate one hour.
One hour?
So one of the things we were asked to do in the TRC process was to present an exhibit showing what a conforming sign looked like. And so we, we have that, it's only on a smaller sheet, but let's identify that and mark it. That was also in the packages that were submitted to the board. Yes, correct, so let's mark that as A8. And I believe that is sheet S1 that was submitted to the board as part of the application, dated, is it January 12th, 2023?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so that will be A, A8. And if you could just identify the square footage of that sign, please?
It's eleven, eleven, three, four inches, four just by three, being, you know, actually, it's about thirty-six and change, I don't have the numbers in.
Okay, and there was a question, I believe, in Mr. Novak's report about what percentage of the facade area that sign represents? Do, do you know what that number is?
I don't have it.
And then if we could just put up the sign, the elevation again, please, and just identify the signs that are proposed for the board, please? Okay, if you could just point out the signage that's proposed, and then we'll discuss that further when our planner testifies.
Yeah, this is our signage, this is.
So that's I had, that's all I have at this time for Mr. Fanoz.
Question I asked before, any other structural changes that you have?
There's certain, certain changes that are very relevant. So the common changes will happen here on the molding, because we're painting the starting area. So the engineers have been here that get the enforcement for the semi wall, so we can plant some of these things here. And we have minor pressure and change, so we can have our. But not really, we're not really moving inside for nineteen, we're just importing the sphere wall to take the sheer. but not really, we're not really moving inside for nineteen. It's just important that sphere wall take the sheer
Just to build the loading.
How how are you addressing security issues? Like you're hi hiring security people to be in the building, there are cameras, things, you know, things of that nature, because a lot of incidents have been having with the rest of the country.
Yeah. I would think that should be more for operation.
Can I ask a question from John or Dave? Is one
Security.
One hour separation wall, fire fire rated wall between the two tenants is for code is that sufficient? One hour fire rated wall?
Anis, that would be a construction issue, and I know there's an application in front of the construction department to put the demising wall in. That's totally in their domain, not ours.
It would be U C C code, so that's specific outside of our regulations.
I see. But they will decide whether that one one hour rated wall is sufficient or not, okay?
Anis, between business uses, one hour tenant separation is is the law in the building code of the state of New Jersey.
This is a security question?
Yeah, Linda, this is a taped meeting. You shouldn't talk about security on camera. You can talk to him afterwards.
Talk to the chief, police chief.
Yeah, he he will, but you don't discuss what they do, how they secure on TV. Linda, again, they will talk to the chief. You can talk to him off of the record, but this meeting is being taped. Never talk security on on camera.
I don't know that we've had any specific discussions. You know, the application was submitted and circulated through the TRC process.
That's technical, but I I was a lot of times especially lately been telling, you know, New York is coming and talk to the police about things that go on. You know, their experience and maybe they have some suggestions. So we're gonna have to get into that tonight, but I'm just saying, I think it's a good idea.
I just go and talk to the chief. That's it.
They have eighty three location, eighty three? Is it eighty three? Hundred eighty, okay, across the country. I'm sure they're experiencing the things that you're seeing in the news, and they're taking appropriate measures to combat that. It's how only so many square feet of tile you could stick in a pocket.
It's heavy.
And it's heavy. It's gonna they're gonna be running away. It'll be slowing down.
Town is different. So I just want you to be, as you come in, as our, you know, we're welcoming you, we just want to help you.
No, thank, thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you. And just to to circle back on the comment in Mr. Novak's report about what percent the conforming sign is of the facade, we did have our sign company compute that. And I have that number here. It's zero point four percent of the facade area for the conforming sign. So it's it's obviously not much. You'll you'll hear more testimony about the sign area when our planner testifies in a few minutes.
So it's less than one percent of the facade is what you're saying?
It's it's less than half a percent of the overall facade area, the conforming sign, correct?
That would be a conforming sign.
Oh, conforming sign. And and what and and your proposed sign, what percentage is that?
The sign company computed that as one point seven five percent.
Yeah, I did a quick calculation of that one point eight percent.
Okay, and and some of the examples they gave, David, you have any idea what the percentages are there or rough estimate?
Most nodes would be slightly larger, especially if you look at the Asian seven tenants faces. So for example, I think the homes and
Yeah.
TJ Maxx and the
And and I can see Dix is probably forty percent.
Yeah, so imagine the closer narrower
Yeah.
That's both the sign area.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have an additional exhibit when our planner testifies of some additional signs within the center that we can also talk about. No, no, there's an additional exhibit that we haven't marked yet besides this one that has some additional signs as well. So we'll get to that as soon as we're finished with Mr. Phanos.
Okay. Any other questions here? Okay. Anybody, anybody else next?
Our, well, assuming there are no traffic questions, like I said, I was not planning to call up our traffic engineer since this is pretty de minimis. I would then move on to our professional planner to provide some testimony concerning the variances that are requested and the design standard exceptions. So Donna, why don't you maybe round out your qualifications a little bit first, and then we can mark your exhibits?
Donna Holmquist, CEO and founder of Preferred Planning Group. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. It's nineteen ninety. That's also the year I obtained my certification from the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University in American Studies with a concentration in urban planning. And I also hold a Master of Urban Planning from New York University. For twenty years of my almost forty year career, I was at Burgess Associates, partially spent time with your esteemed planner, David Novak. I left there Burgess in twenty sixteen, and I founded my firm in twenty eighteen. So in terms of the experience of of my firm, I've testified in probably a hundred communities throughout the state, all the way from Monmouth County, all the way northward to Sussex County, Bergen County, Morris County, Hudson County. And I've also been qualified as an expert in Superior Court, Municipal Court, and Tax Court. I serve as the consulting planner. In addition to doing developer based work in the private sector, I'm also the consulting planner for the Borough of Riverdale and the conflict planner for Fairfield Township. And I've also consulted for the Denville Township Municipal Library and Livingston Township.
And your license is invalid and in good standing?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. So
So I have two exhibits.
Yes, let's let's mark your two exhibits. I believe those would be A nine and ten. Okay, so if you could mark them and then identify them, please, for the record.
Okay, so the first one, I'm gonna mark A nine. And the title of that is one oh one Nassau Park Boulevard Site Context Figure One. And the date on it is January tenth, two thousand twenty three, prepared by my firm, A nine.
A nine, correct.
With today's date.
Correct.
The second exhibit that I'm going to refer to, also prepared by my firm, one oh one Nassau Park Boulevard Nearby Signage Figure Two, with the same date, January tenth, two thousand twenty three.
Great, thank you. And before you begin your testimony, if I could ask you to maybe move the easel a little bit, the is you you just marked a little bit to the right so that not only can the board members see it, but so the design professionals over here can hopefully see it as as well. I know it's a it's tough to get a good sightline from all perspectives. So what I'd like you to do is to describe for the board what's proposed in terms of signage, orient them to the site, and if you could present whatever conclusions you've reached as to why you believe that relief can be granted.
Sure. So our our aerial is from a service that we subscribe to near map. It's an Australian company. They do aerial imagery updated quite frequently. So our aerial is very recent. It's from September twenty sixth, two thousand twenty two. And that's that's the base map there. So I won't belabor what Kim Lee Horn did, orienting you to the site. But our our focus area, as you can see, is the area to the north or east, depending on how you're looking at it, north or east of the main circulation drive. And we have an asterisk depicting the location, which was the former Walmart, which will be split between floor and decor and the Ocean State Job Lot. We identified with the red arrows, the entry nodes, the main entry nodes to the site. Obviously, Quaker Bridge Road traversing to Nassau Park Boulevard, where there's a driveway in the center area. There's also another entry node north of that Gateway Drive, which is currently under construction. And then traveling around to the north, we have another entry drive in the central portion just to the south of the subject building. And the main entrance with another red arrow is the entryway from from Route one. So these are in red arrows where vehicles or customers would be approaching to go to the floor and decor site. So we wanted to highlight that for you. The other thing we highlighted here is, in addition to what Kim Lee Horn has shown you, the signage is really to the north of Nassau Park Boulevard. It's a good illustration of the remainder part of the Nassau Park Pavilion shopping area. We focused our analysis, and that's what's shown on figure two in the enlargements. But we focused our our analysis of the signage that is in the immediate area, the study area, the area of influence, however you choose to refer to it in closest proximity is maybe a simpler way to say it, to our proposed location for floor and decor. So I'll be giving you further details on our estimates of those signs and how we are compatible with the character of of the existing signage in the area. The other thing I want to point out to you that we've highlighted is difficulties or constraints that's people may face when they're trying to locate floor and decor. Obviously, we have view obstructions by the buildings that exist. We have a viewpoint distance here. If you're coming into this driveway in the central portion where I'm pointing to, the setback of the building from that point is at least five hundred and fifty feet. It's very, very deceptive. When you look at the aerial, you don't realize how great the distances are. But you have to remember the mall itself is is over a million square feet. Continuing around, we have another view obstruction for anyone using Gateway Drive with the PetSmart area of the building. And then, of course, coming in from Route one on that other driveway where obstructed as you're coming in, the building is really behind you. And so this this parking area, just the area between the buildings containing Best Buy, et cetera, and the former Walmart. So just this parking area right here is about seven acres worth of parking. It's it's really enormous. So you don't get that feeling necessarily from looking at the aerial. We are proposing within a fenced staging area in in the parking area, three temporary signs. Well, two will be on the fence, one will be on the building. But the all three won't be there at the same time. So we're we're going to have two on the fence. That would be the coming soon, identifying floor and decor. That's a little bit larger than is permitted. Where thirty two square feet, sixteen square feet is permitted. At the same time, we have that on the construction fencing. We're also going to have the now hiring sign. So two different messages, I think, both equally important. The now hiring conforms at sixteen square feet, but we are proposing to have those both at the same time. So I think in a way it's it's very beneficial because it promotes economic development. It orients people, especially when the construction is going on, so promoting safety and the general public welfare. And then when those two are removed, we're just gonna have a conforming grand opening temporary sign sixteen square feet just to the right side on the building. The other signage that we're proposing is the wall sign on the front facade. That's a hundred forty five square feet. Only fifty square fifty square feet is permitted. It's very interesting the way the ordinance requirement is because we were asked to take the requirement looking at the setback of the building from Nassau Park Boulevard, the the right of way. When really our rear face is that, but technically that is the dimension that calls out for the requirement of fifty square feet. If we took the dimension and just supposed that the public right of way was the main circulation aisle where pretty much everyone is going to be looking at this, a hundred fifty square feet would be allowed. So that that's kind of interesting, and that that portion of the relief is an an exception, a design exception. The temporary sinages are the are the variances. And of course
So if I understand that correctly, I I just want to make sure that I understood that the reason why the variance is necessary is because the code requires measurement to the closest street, which in our case is in the back.
That's correct.
So that if if the measurement were taken to the front, you're saying that there would be no variance required at all?
Yes, if the public right of way.
Not the variance, the waivers.
Waiver.
I'm sorry. I meant to say design standard exception, correct?
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you for for catching me on that.
So David, I've got a question in regards to this temporary signage.
Yes.
Um, as as she's presenting to us, I remember when we as a planning board reviewed Home Sense and TJ Maxx and Burlington. But I don't remember as part of that application, my my colleagues do. I don't remember any. And we did look at their signage as part of the application, but I don't remember any presentation of or requests of approval of temporary signage. And I'm sure that Home Sense, TJ Maxx and Burlington in their construction phases before they opened up, they probably had a coming soon type of signs.
I'm sure they did.
So why all of a sudden are are we going through this process with temporary signage? The grand opening, the now hiring, the coming soon sign. Why does that need approvals of this board?
The short answer is because the applicant is very honest. And the applicant included the temporary signage information during this application. The odd aspect of our latest developed regulations is that we can add our permanent sign standards in our yeah, exactly, in our design text, which has not indicated correctly. That would require a sign waiver. For some reason, our temporary signage regulations are located within our zoning regulations. So it is a little paradoxical that something that is temporary in nature and will essentially disappear once this building opens up requires both variance relief, that could go with simply a design waiver. But that's that's the that's short answer, because they were honestly made for that in their application. They request the variance is there for all of us. I can't tell you the guys who know the other yet that opened up that had, you know, temporary signs that were larger than the other ones allowed by zoning orders. I think to tell you, I would not be shocked if there was.
I mean, you know, we've had retail users come before us.
Is it?
A lot. That's why
Yeah, is the is the the reason why they're bringing it up is because their temporary sign is larger than what we permit?
It is, yes.
So so if it was conforming, they would not be bringing it up, correct?
Well, there's also a there should be a limit on the number. We're we're proposing, well, three total, but no more than two at one time, and the code allows one.
Okay, the code allows one in in a specific size.
Right, so we're seeking a variance to have two, and we're also seeking a variance to have a larger sign than permitted.
So
And just to to add, if I could, to the question or to the response to the question, you know, in situations like this, there's really two approaches. There is apply for it upfront and and get appropriate relief where needed, or just put it up and ask for forgiveness later when someone notices and and you get a zoning violation. So we elected to be upfront about it and to indicate to the board what we're proposing in the hope that the board would see that it's reasonable. One thing that we put in our our variance justification that was attached to the variance application, which I I did not ask Mr. Sporer to address, but perhaps should have, was that floor and decor does much of its hiring locally. And one of these temporary signs is a now hiring sign, and so it's very important in those efforts to have the now hiring sign because they do hire upwards of seventy five percent from the local community. And so that's one reason why it's important to be able to have that sign. And also to be able to have a sign that says, you know, coming soon. So you put those two signs together, you see the floor and decor logo, and you realize, hey, I should go to their website and apply for a job.
Is I guess it's also possible that all those other applications had one sign and it was conforming, right?
That could be possible.
Okay.
Anything's possible.
Anything possible, unlikely but possible.
Mike, I just don't remember that being part of any other presentation to us.
I'm sure they had signs up, yeah.
Yeah, typically, when I think back to the 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 Home Sense and the or the TJ Maxx and Burlington, their local recent application, I feel like Southwest, the Best Buy, they put sign up in the back recently.
Oh, at home, at home. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't remember temporary signs for at home. At home, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't remember temporary signs for at home.
I don't think any-
And that was like last, I think that was the last thing we looked at at this shopping center.
I believe it was wrong. None of those applicants had ever, that temporary signs.
Right.
We're not sure that they had.
If I can, just for 20 seconds to, for the board, people might be wondering why variance is for some things and waivers for the other.
Yes.
If the provision, if you want relief from a provision in the zoning section of the ordinance, it's always a variance. If you want relief from design standards in the site plan ordinance or subdivision ordinance, it's a waiver or an exception is the other terminology.
Thanks, Jerry. Very good.
Okay.
So you just called on it, so.
Please continue, Donna.
Okay, so I'll shift your attention to the other exhibit. But just before I do that, to recap on Kim Lee Horn's representation of the area to the north of Nassau Park Boulevard, about four of those signs are much larger than Floor and Decor. That's the takeaway from that for you. Looking at-
Donna, can I ask just a question about the waiver relief from the signage? One was for the size of the sign and the other was for the height of the letters. Is that, from David Novak's report, it looked like that was two different signs?
Well, are we talking about the wall sign? You're talking about the wall sign on the front, not the temporary signage?
Right, I'm talking about the wall sign. Is it the same sign?
Same sign, yeah. I picked up the note, but the front of the sign is the west of the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay. So looking at the figure two, which is nearby signage, that's identified with the letters A, B, C, D on the front with the Best Buy, Five Below, Home Goods, and PetSmart. Just based on the distances, we didn't look at Home Depot. When I was out there, and those photographs are from January 5th, so they're very recent. When I was out there, you know, standing in the parking lot near our subject building, I could barely see the Home Depot. So that, if you're wondering why we didn't include those, it's because as a practical matter, you can't even see it when you're out there. So really, to me, the most pertinent signage is what we've identified as A, B, C, D. So what we did was we looked at the relevant information for the square footages. I know some of the board members were asking about relative to the facade, but we were looking at the square footage of Floor and Decor and the sign that they're, the main sign that they're proposing, the 145 square foot sign relative to their square footage, which is about 76,000 square feet, and they have 145 square foot sign proposed. When we look at the four businesses that are in closest proximity to us, they're all smaller square footage occupancies. And the Best Buy is really the closest one to us, the most comparable, I'll say. Because as I said, Floor and Decor is about 76,000 square foot, 145 square foot sign. And we estimate Best Buy is about 143, 145, thereabout, square foot sign. And their square footage is 58,420. The way we estimated the signs was two ways. We did it based on the photographs that were taken out in the field. And then our near map source, surveyors use near map, okay? That's how accurate it is. It's accurate to about six inches from, you know, certain distances. So it's very, very accurate. And they have an oblique image, which is a little different than a regular aerial. And you can measure width and height very accurately on there. So we measured our signs two ways to present information. Okay, so I feel very confident in my estimates, okay? And we did check with your planner just to see if he had info, and he did not. So we really did try to go the extra step to represent accurate information for this board. So again, Best Buy, very comparable to us, but a smaller square footage for the store. Five Below, 70 square feet, and the store is only about 8,123 square feet. Home Goods, the sign is estimated to be about 126 square feet. And the square footage of the store is much smaller than ours at 27,040 square feet. And lastly, PetSmart, bigger sign than us because of the appendages to the top of the sign. So we measured all the way around, including those. So they're about 165 square feet. The sign is, the store occupancy is far smaller than Floor and Decor at 23,124.
They also have an additional sign. I know from a past zoning application for the Banfield Animal-
The Animal Hospital, yeah.
Additional signage.
Yeah, that also was, to me, barely visible when I was out there because of, the building is a little bit recessed kind of in that section, and the signs like very tiny, so I didn't include that one. I felt like it was kind of an anomaly compared to what was around us. So I think for the size store that Floor and Decor is occupying, their sign is very small compared to the mass of their occupancy. You heard from the architect about the color scheme. Very updated, very tasteful, and very coordinated. And that leads me into the master plan for the township, the 2020 master plan, where there's a big emphasis in the B3 retail node district about compatibility, supporting retail uses, but also having public amenity and a unified identity. And our team has worked closely with the township in the TRC meetings to incorporate some of that metal structure that exists, which is visible throughout the Nassau Park Pavilion, but do it in a color scheme, which is compatible, and also in a design which is compatible while having these upgrades. So I believe that the proposal is entirely consistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan. This application furthers at least three purposes of planning per the municipal land use law. That's 4055D-2. Those would be three subsections we picked out for your consideration of compatibility and advancement of planning. One is subsection A, encouraging municipal action for a variety of uses. Subsection I, promoting a desirable visual environment. And subsection H, promoting efficient transportation and circulation safety. For the deviations, for the design exceptions, I neglected to mention the loading. There was a lot of testimony on that. The combined uses, Ocean State Job Lot and Floor and Decor require nine spaces. The plan is depicting two spaces for each use, but there was quite extensive testimony on the lack of overlap and the suitability of those proposed number of spaces for these uses. So for the design exceptions, those would be the major wall sign that we're proposing, the 145 square feet, and the loading that I just mentioned. We feel that it would be undue hardship on this applicant to comply with the zoning standards. The sign would end up being way too small, not visible from a distance of over 500 feet. And the loading would be excessive. Regarding the temporary wall signs, technically a variance. We're mounting those on the construction fencing. Those will serve to orient people coming into the site. It's not going to be a permanent situation. So I guess if I had to argue C1 and C2, I would say it promotes safety. And we're doing it based on the configuration of the setting that we're in. And so I think that concludes my planning testimony.
I think it does. That's all I have for Ms. Holmquist at this time.
Any questions? I had a quick question regarding traffic. Our traffic consultant made a comment regarding details on the four crosswalks shown in the restricted areas. Is there any problem with striping those?
No, no problem whatsoever. I believe Mr. Diggan said we would provide that and certainly can do that. I did just actually want to touch on a couple of the consultant comments now that we've concluded the witness testimony.
Yep.
So the comment, Mr. Chairman, that you just mentioned, the crosswalk detail, that was the only item, I think, in the traffic report and the landscape architect report. We've already indicated that the landlord-
And you'll indicate if there are any that you object to?
I'm sorry?
I take it you will indicate if there are any that you object to?
No, there is nothing that we object to.
Okay, great.
So we accept all of them. And I believe everything that we requested to provide testimony about from the engineers' report, we've worked into our presentation. So I think we've fully addressed everything in your consultant's comments, but I'm sure they'll tell us if they disagree.
Yes, they will. Okay. David, you want to go first?
I get it, correct. My name is David Novak, the first associate consultant. We had a memo dated January 25, 2023. I'm very agree, Donna, that's all the points in my memo regarding the requests and the signage. I think we agree that the driver for the waiver relief for the sign is being considered in the ordinance that set a certain sign, depending on how far you are from the right line. So because this building is roughly around 100 feet from Nassau Park Boulevard, they had the most restrictive sign regulations for wall signage as opposed to if it was, say, 130 feet away or 400 feet away. And as you heard, the front wall of that building is roughly 500 feet away from the main circulation aisle.
Yeah.
The temporary signs are temporary in nature, so I have no objection to those. They will be removed. So, you can see that running with the length of the pipe, it will be removed. I just had one question, not necessarily planning related, but with the other signs. I think I heard previously that there would be some temporary signs directly from the pickup area. Do you hear that, Bradley?
I, well, I think what you heard was Mr. Spoor indicated if there was a concern, we could look at providing some directional signage. Mr. Diggan did talk about the "I'm Here" signs, which are marking the parking spaces. And there is the wall sign on the side of the building that says "Customer Pickup" that helps direct customers, so.
We do allow, the reason I bring that up, to allow structural signs in that district. There is limited to two square feet size. So if you do find that you need structural signs, they are somewhat limited in area.
But should we do that now?
That's kind of getting at, they wanted a preemptive waiver, so to speak, when they think a larger sign in the area might be appropriate for that. Just in case they need it, they don't want to come back in front of the board.
So you know what size sign you want?
I mean, I don't know that we have anything designed at this point. And it, of course, would be subject to the approval of the condominium association. But four square feet is probably a reasonable, you know, area. And we'd need to say Floor and Decor on it, obviously, to direct customers to, you know, the pickup area. So it might say something like Floor and Decor Customer Pickup or something, you know, along those lines using Floor and Decor's logo.
You can say square footage, or you can say subject to the county staff approval as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I was going to recommend.
The more flexible, the better.
Yeah. And I know, Howard, you had that section in the notice that took me back. I wasn't exactly sure what you were looking for. I'd be more comfortable if we set a number. And then if it doesn't look like it's working, to come back on a much more informal basis.
That's fine. Well, in the interest of flexibility, then, could we say six square feet? I don't know that we'll need six, but that sounds like it should be reasonable. If we need to come back, we can, but that should give us enough flexibility, I think, to stay within.
It's six square feet.
The last directional signage application I remember was at Market Bear. But I forget what that area was.
I don't have a problem with six square feet. It's kind of busy there.
And can we make it subject to location to be approved by-
Yeah, I was going to say-
The board staff? Because we'll need to consult with the condominium association, get their approval. And then we can just work with your staff, if that's all right, to identify the specific locations. And I guess in terms of quantity, probably two?
Okay, that's six square feet right there.
Okay. So let's, if we could then, up to three of those signs with a square footage up to six square feet, the details and locations to be worked out with your professionals, that's acceptable?
I'm fine with that. It's good. My colleagues are. Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
That's all I have for my memo. I have a few next questions remaining.
And you're okay with the size of their wall signs?
I am okay, yes. You know, I think if we look at the size of that sign compared to the total side area, based on my rough estimate, I've got about a 1.8%. Right. Full sign, about 1.8% of that total side area. We think their sign consultant had it roughly in the same area, 1.75%. So when you look at it compared to the total side area, I don't believe in powering sign. And if you look at conforming sign-
And there's two signs, right?
And the other side is completely conforming.
Okay, do we allow one or two? I thought we only allow one.
We allow the one in planned commercial development. If this was a non-planned commercial development, it would only be allowed one.
Okay, got it. Okay. I have no issues with the signs.
Did I swear you folks in on this application or just the last one? I don't even remember. I don't, I don't think I did. Okay. Okay, for all our profession, who's going to attest? Okay.
I've got that slide, but I should probably get it.
Yeah, you should. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you have given and will give has been and will be the truth? So it's one, just if you could just state your name to the record.
David Novak with Verge, Secicits, and LVAA, planning consultant.
John Taylor, Assistant Township Engineer, West Hunter Township.
Wazee Masood, Traffic Consultant, Township.
Andy Novakowski, Land Management.
Okay, great. John, you want to go ahead?
John Taylor, our memo is January 25, 2003, 2020. Sorry. The two items I had questions on, one was 1.02, which I think Mr. Novak and the board answered that question about wayfinding signs or directional signs. And 1.04, there was testimony from the applicant about the generator, the proposed generator. But I didn't, I don't recall hearing whether a generator will be stored, a portable generator will be stored on-site.
No, we do not store a generator on-site. It's just the event of-
So this is a standby generator?
We have it written throughout. That will get delivered to the site.
Cindy, is he being picked up? He is, okay.
Okay, so you won't be storing a generator on-site or be-
Not unless it's being used or just detached until it's taken off.
So it's on an emergency basis, not on any kind of planned basis?
Correct.
Hey, John, on 1.04, what's a call-out?
It's just a fancy way to say label. It's a label on the plan.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
It started, I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem. I didn't know what it was.
And that's all I have questions on.
John, I take it for 1.03, you want to have a condition which relates to the last part of the last sentence, but the note being added to the plans, and 1.09, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
1.05, John, that seven and a half by seven five feet area, that they answered that?
Yeah, I believe they did. What I heard was that that was for recyclables for the store and that that was sufficient for their use. I guess we could ask them to provide some more information about the the nature of the recyclables they'll store there and their generation rate for that material. This is the recycling area, the seven and a half by seven and a half storage area for recyclables?
Do you think we need that information?
We remember the board was interested in it, so I think we could get a little more information about it.
Is that big enough? Seven and a half by seven and a half?
Yeah, it's plenty big enough. That's what we use standard across all our cars, boxes, pallets.
Okay.
As of the interest of full information on that, so what kind of generation do you have? Does that recycle, does that recyclable area get emptied twice a week, three times a week?
Why don't you go to a microphone just so we can be picked up better? Thank you.
That really just depends on the store and the volume at the time. It can, similar to our compactor, it can range from three times a week to once every three weeks. And the stores call in as needed, as just part of our standard operating.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. 1.09, is it anticipated there's going to be any disturbance to the site? 5,000 square, greater than 5,000 square feet?
Yes.
Yes, and we have that approval on hand and we'll submit it for resolution compliance.
Okay. So you have- So you, so you, you have approval from Mercer County Soil Conservation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Mr. Diggins says yes.
Okay. That's a condition?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anything else for John? No, okay, Dan, you're up.
So I submitted a report on January twenty-fifth. Uh, the first comment was testified to that the center owner who have basically maintains the parking lot has agreed to repair anything that's missing or damaged in terms of landscape at the center. That could be a condition of this approval, but it's really David Reed could do that as part of their normal maintenance. And the second one they've addressed, I was just asking them to do all the, uh, presentation they did on signs and the socks.
Okay.
Any questions?
Nope. I don't, anybody? No? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, this is Quasi Masood, traffic consultant. We issued a letter, January twenty, twenty twenty-three. I have only one comment. It's the crosswalk details. Definitely have already addressed that. So waiting for that. And, uh, apart from that, we don't have any other problem to address, so.
Okay, great, thank, thank you. Um, there's a letter from, uh, Chief Lynch regarding, uh, fire safety code and so on. Um, any issues?
No, we agree to everything in the letter. I, I believe you're referring to a memorandum dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
I can't find the letter in front of me, but, uh, Curtis.
Just want to make sure we're all talking about the same document, but if that's what you're referring to, then yes, we agree to all of the.
January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three?
Correct, we agree.
And you're okay with all those conditions?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, anything else? Anybody? Okay, um, I'll open it to the public to come up to the microphone and, um, state your name and address for the record. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Can move by Linda. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any, uh, anybody have any issues? Jerry, you want to, you want to just, um, summarize the conditions?
Well, let me just go over the relief. Okay, that's minus site plan, minus site plan approval. Those four waivers, two relating to the facade sign, one relating to the number of loading docks, and the one we just talked about a few minutes ago about the number and size of the directional signs. Um, then the two variances for the temporary signs, the number and size of, of the temporarily, size of non-temporary signs and number of temporary signs. Um, six submission waivers are on section one point one of the engineers' report. And then the conditions, which we've basically gone through, I could go through them again.
No.
Yeah, I don't think I have to.
No, we don't need to go through them again, but, uh, as long as you have them down.
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, application PB twenty-two dash oh seven.
Okay, I move to approve the application with the, I can't do it like you, you do it with the.
It's like a masterpiece, the way, the way you make them.
I like to, uh, move to approve the.
Put it that way in the minutes.
PB twenty-two dash oh seven with all the conditions that, uh, Jerry read.
Okay, I hear a second. Second. Um, second, second by Linda, motion by the mayor. Uh, please call the robe.
This is now?
Yeah.
Red?
Yes.
Councilman? Yes. May or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. What, what's your usual practice in terms of timing for memorialization?
That's between.
What, what we'll do, I'll, we'll try to get you a draft resolution as soon as we possibly can. Um, there are a couple of pending, and I'll get it for, for your review and review the staff members, and then we'll get it, agenda it's at the next meeting after that.
Okay, great, thank you.
If we can get it done in February, that would be great. I'm not sure we can, but that's what we're going to aim for.
Okay, that would be great as soon as possible because we would like to get to the next step with the building department as soon as we possibly can. Thank you.
And welcome to West Windsor.
Thank you. Good luck.
You'd like to?
What? I think we, I think we do keep it. We keep it and we file it.